All right, good evening, everyone. The time is 7:07 PM. It is Tuesday, February 23rd, and I'm going to call this regular city council meeting to order. Would all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The City Secretary, please call the roll.
Mitchell.
Here.
Coach.
Here.
Ellison. Flores Cale.
Here.
Rizzo.
Present.
Bradshaw.
Here.
Tobias.
Present.
All right, seven members present. We have a quorum. This is a regularly posted meeting, but it's actually coming off the back end of a very interesting week that we just had. So with that said, I've requested to postpone some of the items that were on last week's agenda that got pushed over. We will pick those up back up, starting on March the 2nd. Those items are the majority of the presentations that have been proposed, with the exception of the statutory components of the Kyle area, I'm sorry, the 2020 Annual Racial Profiling Report, where we will receive a more thorough update on that in the coming meeting or two. So with that, also, if there are no objections at the beginning of this meeting, we're going to move forward. The item that was posted by Mayor Protem as it relates to recognizing staff and other members of the community that were critical during our emergency response plan related to Snowvid 21. So if there are no objections, I'm also going to move that right up to the very front. All right, well, I'm going to just, first, I'm going to go through approval minutes and then citizen comments, and then we'll bring forward the staff item. Agenda item number one and two, city council meeting minutes.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Mayor, motion.
To approve the moment, the minutes for February, special meeting minutes for February 2nd, 2021, and the regular council meeting minutes for February 2nd, 2021 as well.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Rizzo, seconded by Councilmember Bradshaw, that we approve the minutes. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion carries 7 to 0. Next up, citizen comments period. At this time, we ask anyone in the audience or who is registered and wishes to speak online to please do so. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes and that you direct those comments to the mayor and council. First up, I have Ms. Tracy Sheal.
Mayor, Mayor Protem, council, for the record, Tracy Sheal. Most of the time, you hear negative comments and complaints from this podium, but not tonight, not from me. I just wanted to thank the leadership of the City of Kyle, including council and all department heads, for the work that they did last week for your designation, Snowvid. But it was very hard on a lot of our residents in the city, and you guys stepped up and really tried to make it as bearable as it could be. So this resident says, "Thank you." Also, I want to say that the texts and phone calls that we got on a daily basis were amazing. You know, it was bad enough, our people were in the dark, literally, but not so far in the dark that they did not know what was going on. And again, this resident thanks you for that. And I hope that Mr. Sellers and his city manager report can let residents know how they can get those texts and phone numbers, you know, and phone calls if they did not receive them last week for any future emergencies, because unfortunately, they do happen. So I, again, thank you very much, and I appreciate you, oh, and, and I didn't mean to leave you guys out, and I'm sorry, especially Harper and Public Works. Oh, my goodness. Thank you, thank you, thank you. All right. Bye-bye. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. Next up, Mr. Peter Parcher.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members and staff. I would like to echo Tracy's comments made. Y'all did a fantastic job this week. You went well above and beyond, and, you know, I had the pleasure of working with some of you during that time. Awesome job, awesome. Same to city staff, please, all the way down to the bottom. Please, from the bottom of my heart, thank you. Moving on with that one, same theme, different subject. I have formed the Kyle Emergency Response Team for the use by the city, Kyle Police, Kyle Fire. As of right now, I formed it this morning, as of right now, there are 33 members ready to go to do general volunteer work. They will be trained to do emergency operations. And on my third note, I would hope you all are still considering putting the Kyle Veterans Parade on an agenda, so we can work with that as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Parcher.
Sir.
I just wanted to say thank you for stepping up and taking charge of our warming center and making sure everybody that went there was tended to and taken care of. From the bottom of my heart, thank you for what you did during the winter storm and, you know, going out there in the cold. A lot of people wouldn't step up and do that, and you did, and I appreciate that. Thank you for your service that evening.
Thank you.
All right, is there anyone who's registered to speak online? Okay. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak on any item? All right, seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close citizen comments. It is now closed. Next up, we're going to go to agenda item number 25, Discussion of Possible Action Regarding Recognizing the City of Kyle Employees for Their Extraordinary Efforts During Winter Storm Uri. Mayor Protem.
So this is a work in progress during Snowpocalypse, AKA Snowmageddon, AKA Winter Storm Uri, AKA Snowvid 21.
Snowvid 21.
AKA also known as a very challenging week for the state of Texas and the City of Kyle. I asked for this item to be put on the agenda at the last minute after being out in the field and basically just chasing our tails, watching our staff do everything they could to get us through this, watching our fellow, my fellow council members do everything they could to help, and then watching the community come out in droves to try to help their neighbors, try to help the elderly, you know, just everybody was pitching in, and it was really just a sight to witness. And I was really proud, and I know that when we push our staff and when we push the community this hard to help each other, it gets, it just, sometimes it goes without recognition. And so I called Scott up, and I was scared to call Scott up sometimes during this week because I knew he was busy with all sorts of stuff. Side note, I just want to tell the story about Scott. We were in the midst of chaos. It was probably Wednesday or Thursday, I don't remember, but I felt brave enough to go out there and drive on the snow and ice, and I was done calling him, and so I just let him know, "I'm going to show up at your house so I can get an update." And I drove to his neighborhood, parked in front of his house, and he was standing on his lawn, and at first, I thought he was a homeless man, because he hadn't showered the entire week, his hair was all over the place, and he looked completely stressed out. And it had an effect on me, watching how hard our city manager, I knew if he looked that stressed, there were tons of members of our staff that were that stressed out. And I know that my fellow council members were stressed out, and I know people in their homes with no power and no water were stressed out. And so watching the resilience of everybody fighting through something that we had never dealt with before, something that we necessarily weren't equipped to deal with in this state, it warmed my heart, and I wanted to put this on there to give some recognition in the immediate. But Scott and I have been talking about what we're going to do in the future to really relay that appreciation to our staff members. And so there's some different plans, and we'll bring them back on the next council meeting in a way to truly show appreciation to everybody involved. But I also knew that we had a lot of council members that wanted to say something about this, and so really, this is an opportunity for us to be thankful for getting through this situation and to show appreciation to everyone. And I just want to say, Scott, thank you, man. You're a great, fantastic city manager, and it shows in these situations, and it shows with our department heads. I mean, it shows all the way down to Benito from Public Works with a smile on his face in the middle of a food drive on the weekend that Councilmember Rizzo and staff put together in 24 hours. And it was awesome to be right there next to them, working alongside them, being a soldier, and just following their lead on that. Same goes for Harper. I drove over to Public Works one day when we were in the midst of our water crisis to, just to get to know more, and he's showing me screens and taking me through, and the stress on his, is up to his eyeballs. And it was fantastic to just watch the way that he just kept moving and working, and I want to thank him, I want to thank every department head, I want to thank our council, but I want to thank you, Mayor, because when we were in the midst of the water crisis and it was looking really, really bad for the entire city, and we had to boil water and no one knew where to get water, and, you know, you guys were scrambling to figure out how to set something up. I knew that heads were coming together for plans, and when you guys came up with the idea for the water at Hayes High School, that was an awesome feat that I know wasn't an option the day before, or you didn't know of that option. So I just think that we have an amazing leadership group up here, an amazing council who's willing to do whatever they need to do to get their hands dirty, but really to support this staff who's really the ones in the trenches, getting their hands dirty. And my final thanks before I end on this is what it really showed me was when the lights go out in this town, this community really still makes it shine bright, because it was a dark time, but I saw my neighbors using the power of social media and without power go into their cars so they can charge their phones, so they can use really bad bandwidth, because everybody was using it because no one had internet, to communicate, to check on their neighbors and to share milk, so a, the two-year-old three houses down could have milk because the stores were empty, and people sharing with each other. And it was just an unbelievable, beautiful sight of humanity to witness, and it made me very proud of our community and proud to serve this community. And I want to say that I have, it's touched my heart, and I've learned even more from my council members, from my staff, from community members, what it really means to, to serve your community, but to just go all out and do whatever you can and be a helpful presence. And so with that, I'm going to yield the floor, but only until next meeting, when we figure this out, Scott, of how we're going to truly dole out appreciation. But I am thankful for everyone in this room and our community members and I, and our staff, and I look forward to a way to truly thank all of you and every department. I tried to narrow it down to some departments, and that was the funny challenge of it all, is as we talked about who did what and who went the extra mile, it just kept growing. And that was also a beautiful problem to have, is how do you think when everybody's doing something, and that's, that's a great community. So with that, I yield the floor.
Councilmember Ellison.
Thank you, Mayor, and very well said. I certainly second everything that you just commented on. I wanted to share my perspective of the past week really quickly, if I could. First, I'm going to start with the community. I agree that, you know, while we did go through a very difficult time last week, and certainly plenty of things for us to realize from that, and I don't think anybody knew that our systems across the state I'm talking about would fail the way they did, but when they did, we had a community that pulled together. And I just wanted to share a couple of perspectives with everyone. So I remember when I was over at the Lehman High School for the mass food distribution, and we had a just surplus, if you can't even have that, of volunteers there. It was great. And I want to thank my council, fellow colleagues, Councilmember Rizzo, Councilmember Flores Cale, for doing a lot of heavy lifting and that, and anybody else that I've missed that did a lot of work to get that done. But I was talking to some of the volunteers, and almost every one of them that I talked to at that event told me a very similar story. They said that they had not lost water, they had lost power, nothing really impacted them. They wanted to come help because they saw the community around them was having a difficult time. And I hope that makes an impression on y'all all the way, it made an impression on me, and they just spoke volumes about how our community comes together, even when we're not the one ailing. And so that really touched my heart, and to see, you know, all of our community, whether it was, you know, I saw my colleagues out there, I saw staff out there, I saw community members that, some of the regular crew of volunteers, the folks that you don't see as much of but are very much concerned with this city and want to see it prosper. So that was very unique. The other, the other story I want to share about our community is helping out on Saturday and Sunday when we were doing the water filling stations at Hayes High School. And you had folks coming in, and that was the interesting thing about this, that it put everybody on the same level. And I know we, as human nature, kind of do this, I admit that I do this. You see the folks that are coming through, all kinds of different cars, of all different kinds of, perhaps of the socioeconomic spectrum, but we were all on the same level playing field when this hit us. And so, you know, the gratitude that was expressed to me, I wanted to then extend it to staff primarily of providing that service and those resources and really doing everything they could to pull together in order to help our community that was in need. So I just want to tip my first hat to our community for pulling together, helping out their fellow person. Coach, you did a great job of explaining many different examples of that, and so kudos to our community. Second group I'd like to thank would be our staff. I will say this, Mr. Sellers, there's no other person, no other city manager that I would rather have led us through this situation than you, sir. And I certainly appreciate you. I appreciate hearing the story about you in the yard. I think that just says further testament of what you give and what you, what you give to this city. And you certainly care about it, that's undeniable, and you show it every time I interact with you. And so I want to thank you for your leadership throughout this, and by extension, every staff member that reports to you indirectly or directly. I want to share a few more stories. Certainly had every group, I was seeing everybody from every different department out there helping, whether it was the food distribution or the events of the weekend as well. You know, Benito, who's in our Parks Department, I'll correct that for him, Benito, you know, and just a bunch of other folks that were there, and, you know, but they don't, some of these people don't even live in our community themselves, and certainly they have their families to look after as well, because we're all dealing with this. But to so selflessly give of themselves to our Public Works Department and other departments working into the night around the clock, and then to be there on a Saturday and Sunday helping fill water tanks, and I could see the exhaustion in those guys and the men and women there. And that just, it, it once again, just gave me so much hope in humanity and in the hearts of those that are in our community and those that work for our city. You can tell with Team Kyle, it's more than just a job. These people truly care about our community and care about the people that live here, the city, and that just makes me so proud to be a part of it myself and to witness it even. So I want to thank staff from the bottom of my heart. You all showed it unbelievably, the amount of care and attention, and that nothing was going to stop you all, not even fatigue with doing what you could, and any one of them to get us back going. And I will say, you know, I heard and saw online in various different communities, larger cities with many more resources and much more staff, obviously they have to cover more area, but Kyle was at the forefront of that, and I'm glad that we had the type of leadership to grab the bull by the horns, make some decisions, not rely on others, even when things were being told that they would happen. Until it, until you could see it, y'all kept moving, and so I certainly appreciate my colleagues for doing that as well, and certainly it just, it's a very proud, proud time for me. It's tough, you know, when we go through something so difficult, to find those silver linings and to talk about something positive, but I appreciate this item being put on the agenda. And once again, there's no, there's no group of people, no staff of any other city that I'd rather have than the group we have on Team Kyle. And I would be remiss, or I would certainly miss people if I tried to name everyone. You know who you are, I saw you out there, I tried to talk with you, and hopefully just try to put a smile on your face, because I know you were tired, but thank you, thank you, thank you so much for what you do for our city and each day in and day out. Thank you.
Councilmember Bradshaw.
I think Councilmember Ellison said it perfectly. Proud is the word that I think I can use with confidence to reflect the way that all 56,000 residents in Kyle feel after seeing how well the city collectively, the community, the staff, the leadership responded to, to the events that occurred. And I'm just going to echo from there, I won't take up too much more time, I'm just going to echo everything that Councilmember Coach and Councilmember Ellison have said. Staff, you all are amazing. We are so fortunate to have you and so grateful for everything that you did for the city.
Councilmember Rizzo.
First of all, I'm going to start off with just telling the staff, wow, amazing. From the leadership at the top, all the way down to the boots on the ground, was an amazing job. Out in the cold, in the middle of the night, running torches, trying to de-ice some of the tanks. I mean, I was impressed, because I was out there, I got to see them, and it just blew my mind. Lack of sleep, tired, and they kept persevering on. I just can't say enough about our staff here. The people that work for Kyle are amazing. Sometimes we forget about some of them. I'd like to recognize our police department as well. Our PD was out there just as, as much as everybody else, and they're out there patrolling in their cars, and these people are risking their lives. The staff, the police department, they're doing all that to give us our basic needs, safety, water, and just keeping us safe, you know? And I just, I'm just, my heart was just full of what they were doing for us, for our citizens. You know, it was just amazing. But I also want to recognize somebody that really surprised me, because I really don't know her that well, but Councilmember Cale. You know, when I first showed up to that shelter and those 26 displaced seniors were there, you know, seeing you there, talking to them, comforting them, was amazing, working on a solution for them, you know? And I want to thank our city manager, Scott Sellers, for finding that solution. Together, we, it was a team effort, and we did a great job of finding them a soft pillow and a warm bed to sleep in, and it wouldn't have happened if we all didn't care. And talking about that heart, we were able to get together and provide 1,680 meals. After the event, Councilmember Cale felt a little bit bad because we weren't able to reach everybody in the City of Kyle, and she had a couple of tears, I'm going to tell you right now, she needed a hug.
I don't cry.
But that tells you her heart. She wants to help everyone, and that's amazing. I appreciate that. Thank you for sharing that with us. And I did see a tear, but anyway, Samantha, the communication was key on that. Being able to get that out to the public and allowing them to come out and get, participate in that resource was great. So thank you and your team and everybody. But just staff from city council to staff to citizens, neighbors helping neighbors, that's what it's about. That's what makes our city better. If you want to build a beautiful city, a better city, is you do it by one small good deed at a time. Neighbors helping neighbors.
Councilmember Flores Cale.
I don't cry, but with that said, this wasn't a really, this was an emotional time, I think, for most people, and we tend to remember not so much the situation but our emotions. And I will say, I was tasked with finding warm meals for our, our city staff, Public Works, wastewater, and the police department, all, we were all trying to look out for you guys, and as we know, there was a huge lack of food, but what there was not a lack of was caring and community service. So as a community, I've never experienced people wanting to help in any way they can. I had leftover spaghetti dinners and barbecue and anything that I could go pick up from people, they were willing to give. We also had companies like Chick-fil-A give meals and Taco Cabana and just people reaching out. It was unreal. I'll tell you, I, I just kind of put out a, "Hey, can we get some food, some warm food?" And then when I went to drop it off, there was food already there that somebody had to, like, people dropped off random sodas, random food, like, I was like, "What is this? This is a buffet." It was, it was amazing, and it was heartwarming, and it made me feel good about my community because first and foremost, they helped keep us together. I saw so many posts of like, "Hey, if you don't have laundry or access to electricity or water, bring it to my house. If you don't have water, you can come shower at my house." It was just unreal, and it gave me a good feeling about not only living in this town but representing this town. So I'm going to say it was an honor to work alongside each of these council members. Each and every one of us had a hand, whether at the time it was going on, we knew it or not, we did. We all worked tirelessly and hard and without hesitation. And so all I can say is, when I was out there helping deliver food while other council members were doing other things, because although we weren't all at one place, we were all busy in our own capacity, so I just want to put that out there, that we were all doing something, but it was an honor to work besides people who didn't hesitate to help other people and, and who wanted to give. I mean, like, like Mr. Ellison said, these were people such as myself who didn't lose electricity and water, but they knew and they empathized with the people who did. And so without hesitation, they said, "Where do I go? Where do you want me at?" And we had an amazing leader, Mr. Rizzo, told everybody what to do that day, because we were blessed with the food but not with the support, and so, let me take that back, our volunteers we got, and let me correct you, within 12 hours, this whole thing was put together. 12 hours, we got volunteers, we got food, we got leadership, and we killed it. We made sure all those boxes were in trunks. I think we ended an hour early because the need was there, but once we got into that rhythm, we were unstoppable, for sure. Everybody there gave it their all, and even though we helped 1,000, what is it, 1,680? He knew the exact number. It still hurt to tell some of these people that we didn't have enough food, so that inspires me to move forward and... So that inspires me to move forward and to work harder and to make sure that this kind of incident never happens again, that we're always prepared, uh, uh, to do our best and to provide the best for our residents. So for our city staff who worked tirelessly and, and gave of all themselves, I mean, I seen people, I seen grown men look like they were about to cry because they felt like they, they failed because of situations that were beyond their control. And I'll say, I, I have nothing but love and respect for not just our residents and our city, but for our staff, and we can never thank them enough. So I, I vote for like a week off. Just give them a week off and let them relax. Maybe like, maybe in spring where it's not hot and it's not cold, so, so we could do without them. But thank you, thank you to our staff, thank you to Samantha who killed it with communications with our city. Uh, I cannot even sing my praises high enough for Mr. Sellers. Um, and I, I didn't know when I, when I got elected, I didn't know what to think. I didn't know what to expect. All my communication with Mr. Sellers was immediately answered. It was reciprocated. He was on it. I asked him and if he didn't know, he was honest enough to say, I don't know. So a lot of love and respect for that. And, um, I think we showed this week that we are Kyle strong. So kudos to everybody in the city of Kyle.
Mayor, one quick.
Councilor Tobias, you want to go next?
Okay.
Go ahead, Rizzo. He can finish up.
I just wanted to finish up on, uh, one more thanks that we forgot was our spouses. Uh, to see our spouses out there working, you know, it was like, um, sometimes they're voluntoaded, not volunteered, and, uh, they show up and they give it their all. And, uh, from the, uh, I just want to thank our spouses for being out there with us in, in the trenches and working hard, just as hard as our, maybe, maybe even harder. Um, I know my wife went to sleep and had no trouble sleeping that night, so definitely, um, just the spouses.
Here, here, to the spouses. Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, it's Tobias. I'll be real quick. Um, I'm going to echo on everything that everybody has said. Uh, city staff, uh, everybody that pitched in, uh, thank you so much. Uh, we do have a lot of heroes that are in our community. Uh, we have a lot of private citizens that were also assisting with passing out water bottles, uh, from their own time, their own money. I want to thank them as well. I also want to thank a lot of the neighbors, again, like somebody had said earlier, uh, helping each other. If somebody was low on food or whatever, we came together as a community on that end. The food bank, we had volunteers from Lehman High School, some of the students that were out there, a lot of the public, uh, works people, teachers, civic group leaders, those were just small examples of the individuals that were out there that were helping out and assisting. But ladies and gentlemen, I just want to stress to you on this end, these type of emergencies and situations and incidents happen all the time. There will be another one, but I want you to be, rest assured, that we as a city will still do our best to come through. There are things that we will need to adjust. There will probably be some improvements that will need to be made. And just going forward to let you know, rest assured, that this council and our mayor and everybody that's on city staff will evaluate everything that went on during this crisis. We will dissect every little thing to see what didn't work, but also what did work and to make improvements from there. So in the future, we will be able to provide a better service and a better, uh, uh, change of communication or whatever it is, uh, on that going forward. So just rest assured that, uh, we are taking notes on this and we will, uh, improve. If you, some of you feel that there were some needs for improvement, but rest assured that we will still be there for you in the time of need. Thank you.
I, I don't really know what to add here. Uh, I've got a few stories that I think are pretty fun, a few people to call out. One's Warren driving back from Las Vegas because he couldn't get a flight while he was off because the wastewater treatment plant was that, in that critical of condition. I think probably without hesitation, he got into a vehicle and made the 20-hour drive back here. I think of Tim Sanford working through the night with his crew, trying to solve water issues. It's, it's one thing to have to work, you know, through the middle of the night, it's another thing to think that the city is relying on you so that they may have water and that if you can't solve the problem, you know, the crisis is going to get worse. Uh, I think of Samantha Armbruster, who early on Friday morning, uh, really embodied a communications director, which is something that we've talked to Samantha about a lot, taking the idea of communication and bringing it up to that level of being, being there, being present, thinking about the city and, and providing great contributions. Samantha contributed mightily, not just in the bringing together of the, you know, the, the resources, but in the, you know, being a leader in the city to make sure we make good decisions that could be defended well in the public. Uh, I think of Harper, uh, who was a true savior to the city and helping us to figure out a potable water crisis. I mean, it honestly about, by about 10 o'clock on Friday morning, it felt like an absolute crisis. We were concerned that water was going to be completely off and that there was no drinking water in Kyle. It didn't matter, it wasn't a matter of money. I mean, just there's, where are you going to get drinking water? Where? Where do you go? I mean, you just can't get it anywhere. Sold out, you know, counties, counties across counties. And, uh, uh, and Harper made the, just great find, uh, to, to get a well site that needed work, that wasn't working, up and ready to go in such short orders for us to provide potable water there was, I, I think a debt the city will never be able to repay, Mr. Wilder, for having that great insight and being able to actually pull it off. Uh, that was pretty, that was pretty impressive, uh, in, in, in my book. Those, I, I think of Vinnie. Man, when Vinnie, uh, he was our, what our skate attacks, when he's sitting there staring at the, uh, screen and those well sites have got all the, the, the flashing red Xs across all the different places, everything has gone down, you're just sitting there staring at it and you're like, this guy, I, I, my life is in your hands, sir. What can you do? I mean, the city is collectively looking, and they don't even know it, but there's a guy in a room who is trying to solve a problem, uh, and they're, and, and, uh, elements are against them. It doesn't seem like help is on the way. And, uh, that was, that was pretty, pretty cool just to see all of those groups. And then just to echo what everyone has said, the city manager, I, I have kind of a different vantage point, but not that different, uh, and just seeing Mr. Sellers problem solve, uh, and multitask like a madman. There's just no way, I, in your shoes, I would not have succeeded to the degree that you did. Uh, so I'm glad I was over here and getting to just witness, but I mean, you, you, you need a third arm of three phones at different points, but it's more than that. It's about, and I, and honestly, to what Councilman Flores Kell said about city manager responding, uh, to everything, I don't know how you do it, Scott. I don't know how you make all the council feel like you have, that, that you communicate with everyone, because I'm sure you get 300 emails a day. In fact, I'm, I know you do. I know you, I know the kinds of demands on your time, but, um, we have a lot of tenured, seasoned executive level staff and any of those. If we don't have Warren, if we don't have Harper, if we don't have Samantha, if we don't have Tim, you know, if we don't have Julie Croxton stepping in as volunteer coordinator and just killing it for three days over the water distribution facility, coordinating dozens of volunteers, just immediately being able to solve that issue. Councilmembers who will go and, and others, fire department and others who will go and help bring old folks, I shouldn't say old folks, uh, down from the, from their top floors. Ms. Margaret, I'm sorry. That was a stink eye. Um, you know, I've, the stories of like letting all, down the stairs, having to, because they've got no water, no electricity, it's dark and it's 16 degrees and they're, I mean, just the, the heroism is all over the place. The Kyle United Methodist Center, the warming, uh, the state representative Weiner going all over the county trying to, to get water and, and delivering herself and selected officials and staff members and volunteers in the community working together. It was a thing to behold because it was very scary, I think, for all of us, um, especially for about a period of 48 hours. There's 48-hour window in there that was touch and go. It was really, it was really, really, really scary. So I'm glad to know that we had, uh, we had all that together and I think we'll probably be putting something like what's been mentioned, something for staff, uh, to recognize not just the ones that, that the council maybe is aware of, but others as well who've, we know that there are crews, I can go on, we could just go on. It was, I, I saw library department representing, I saw Parks and Rec, I saw public works, I saw police. I mean, we were, we were all, yeah, dispatch, dispatch got displaced in the middle of all this and we had to take 911 calls from mobile sites from time to time.
Did we have to move three times, Scott? The dispatch moved like three times?
Yeah.
IT, yeah.
Was taking all the calls from where? From home, using a generator because they didn't have power? Yeah. Like the, the stories go on and on. Samantha, communications director, you have a bevy of content at your disposal, great stories to tell and that we will never be able to tell all of them. Sorry to interrupt you, Mayor.
No. Well, I knew this was going to be a, a week from hell when the first ice storm came and we lost one of our, um, really important citizens in the community who slipped and fell on the ice. And, um, the only person I've ever given a key to the city to or had the inclination to do such, Ms. Sue Farrell. It's, um, this was a week from hell. There's no, there's no question about it and, but it just, it did bring out so much, uh, around, I mean, it was, it was absolute joy to work with staff and my fellow council members. It was just absolute joy. And without, without that, it, it could have definitely gone another direction. These, it, looking back, it seems like it was all destiny or whatever, but going through it, you don't think that way. You think you, that it's, it's just got the potential for absolute failure at every, at every turn. So I'll stop talking. I'm just blabbing, but that's, that's the reality of the last week. It was, it's not over. We still have a lot of issues to deal with, as Councilor Tobias says, Councilman Flores Kell says, you know, we, we got, we got, we've exposed a lot of weaknesses in our own ability to respond to emergencies, our communication, um, you know, our preparedness for all types, different types of emergencies that we never thought. So we do have a lot of, a lot of work, uh, ahead of us to start, you know, really getting the war room mentality together when things go bad so that we can not get that close to falling off a cliff as a community. I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't know. Yeah. So we will work, uh, we will work to make sure this doesn't happen again, of that I'm, I'm sure.
If I may, uh, just to piggyback on what you said and what, uh, Councilmember Tobias said, um, that war room comment, uh, my last thanks is to the citizens who passed our bond for the Public Safety Center. Uh, in that, we will have EOC in that building, we will have communications, uh, we will, it'll get us one step closer to, you know, the resources that we need to fully be able to handle these situations better. Um, it'll help us improve. We do a great job with what we have, but, uh, the community equipping us with that building and the assets we can put inside that building is going to really help us tremendously when we know inevitably something like this is going to happen again. Um, not, maybe exactly the same way, but something. It's been a heck of a last 12 months, say the least. So, uh, thank the citizens for that too, because I think it's going to be a tremendous asset for the community.
Also the school district. I mean, how, how many of the school resources did we utilize? Buses, schools, communications, uh, what else? The well, I mean, it was their water to Hays High, not, not even city water that was provided. Yeah, the school district was just incredible.
Their bus drivers were amazing.
Bus drivers?
They showed up that night, uh, in the middle of the night, I think it was 11:30 at night when we're busing the seniors over to the, um, um, to the residency that we found from. And, uh, they were just so warm and welcoming to the seniors there and just wanted to come out and help and did their best to joke around with them and just make them feel like they were important. Those were amazing bus drivers. They, they, uh, went above and beyond and they, I, I'll tell you, I, I, I just can't say enough about them because they, uh, were, they, they just came out and didn't care about the cold, they didn't care about it being late at night, they just wanted to make sure these people showed up. And not only did they transport them, they waited there because we had to do COVID tests. So we went way in past midnight, I think, that night and they were there the entire time and never complained and almost had a smile on their face. And it, it just, uh, it just shows you how much they wanted to help and how they knew the situation. It was great to see them there and I, I, I don't think they could have picked a better group. All, all, was it four of them? Four of them that were there? Yeah, all four of them were amazing. So, yeah, it was great. So, yeah, definitely the school district.
Citizens Own Patrol.
Oh, yeah.
Huge. They were out there. Just, and that, that program didn't even exist in the city of Kyle six months ago, or I guess a year ago, a year ago. Time flies.
Can I also give a big shout out to Legend Oaks Rehabilitation and Healthcare? They took in the residents that we had without hesitation. Mr. Sellers set it up, reached out to Matt, who is the director out at Legend Oaks Rehabilitation and Healthcare Center. And his question wasn't, do we have room? It was, let me call my staff, make sure I have enough staff. And he, he literally made room. So shout out, and you know, he didn't ask for anything, he, he did it with a warm heart. Um, and so shout out to them and to all the companies who supported our community during this time.
Also, I'd like to give thanks to Derek Chubbs, who's the CEO for the Central Texas Food Bank. I, I want to thank him for trusting that we would be able to put this event on and I want to thank him for the resources that he supplied. But also like to thank Jeff Gonzalez, who's a resident here that works for the Central Texas Food Bank, has lived here in our community for a long time. Uh, with his help as well, we were able to secure 100, 1,680 food boxes that each box provides about 21 individual meals. So that was amazing. Thanks to them.
That's incredible. And if we hadn't already, you know, that's one of those areas where our, our knowledge and experience from pandemic paid off because there was, there was no mass food distribution before the pandemic at all. I mean, that just didn't exist. It just wasn't a thing here in this, in the city of Kyle. And, uh, to Councilor Rizzo and others, uh, credit for working hard to establish that process. Once the emergency came, there, there we are. It's not our first time around the hat, so 12 hours in, you were able to get that solved. That's a, that's really cool. It shouldn't be overlooked. It's really, it's really well done. Um, ARWA is another thing that should be mentioned for anybody who's listening along to our stories. Uh, we are, we are quickly, uh, approaching, we're probably within what, uh, 18 to 24 months away from having our, our Phase 1B, uh, coming online, which would, would generate a significant amount of water from a, from a new source that's not currently there. And people are complaining about that it's going to cost some money, but now you understand why having the water infrastructure in place that, and having it be resilient to, uh, you know, whatever is happening in our current area, uh, that's something that, that, that we ought to, you know, spend some time trying to educate folks on as best as we can as it relates to the new water lines that are coming in, um, that are about to provide a whole lot more water to our community. A whole nother pressure plane or a whole nother source, uh, to go into those pressure planes so that if GBRA goes down like it did last time, ARWA will, will be there to hopefully step in and then some. Anything to add, Scott?
Counsel, thank you. You know, I had a very long list. I, I think you've done a great job recognizing so many, so many people have stepped up. Uh, we could definitely talk about stories. There are stories in every department, how people stepped up incredibly over this last week. Uh, so on behalf of staff, thank you for your support. Thank you to the community. Thank you for all of our partner agencies that have also helped, Hays County Emergency Management, PEC, that worked so hard to get our tower sites back online, uh, GBRA to get the water back to us, uh, especially after they had some turbid water at Lake Dunlap, uh, Seton Hays, they were incredible. We, we haven't really heard a lot of the stories, but there were many, many stories that happened down at the hospital, uh, the rehab center, the Dallas clinics, where lives were saved. Uh, and many stories where we can talk about lives being saved by heroic efforts from many people. EST 5 in our fire district. We could go on and on, uh, but really on behalf of staff, community, partner agencies, relationships we've had in the gold standard city that we are, thank you.
All right, anything else? All right. With that, we'll get into, uh, the meeting. Uh, next up is, uh, agenda item, uh, number four, appointments. Consider nomination and take action for appointment to the Planning and Zoning Commission to fill an unexpired term, Mr. Coontz.
Oh, sorry, I was muted. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Uh, for the record, my name is Howard Coontz. I'm the Community Development Director. Um, so we, we had one resignation from the P&amp;Z Commission as of last November. Uh, we made an advertisement on the city's website through our social media and had a fantastic response rate. Um, we had a number of great qualified individuals who, um, wanted to take the slot, our seventh position on the Planning and Zoning Commission. Um, after we read through the applications, we made our lists, we did our interviews and the, um, recommendation was for Mr. Brandon James, who has volunteered his time and his efforts, made his interest known, uh, to be our next Planning and Zoning, uh, Commissioner. So he is with us here tonight and he is available for any of your questions, um, and he can speak for himself as well. So, Mr. James, floor is yours. Um, and he can speak for himself as well. So, Mr. James, floor is yours.
Thank you, Howard. Um, yeah, I just kind of wanted to introduce myself a little bit, um, tell you about why I'm excited and, uh, really passionate about taking this position and, uh, being involved in this community even further and to let y'all, uh, you know, ask me a few questions. Uh, can y'all hear me? Just fine?
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you. Um, so cool. So my name is Brandon James. Uh, I come from Wichita, Kansas. Uh, I moved here to Texas a few years ago and to Kyle about, uh, two years ago almost, uh, now. I live in the, uh, like Plum Creek area. I currently, uh, work for, moved Texas as a field manager. Um, I've loved this community. It's been an amazing place to live. Um, I've lived quite a few places in the United States and this is by far one of the best places that I'm looking forward to, uh, serving my community effectively, uh, and to the best of my ability. And as far as why, I, I know you've heard a lot this week about the last week. And I just want to say, like, I've organized across four states now, um, over 12 years. And over the weekend, my partner and I have been putting together, um, you know, food and water for those, uh, in our community and across Hayes County, uh, and even, you know, just across the way at the vistas, making sure that they've been having water, uh, for the last few days. Uh, while they've been, you know, in, in trouble. I can't name a community that has done a better job at this. And I want to thank you all. Not just, um, you know, it really shows why this community is an amazing place. All the council members giving all of their time. I've never lived in a place where all of the council members during an actual emergency have given all of their time. All of the staff. Scott Howard, Public Works, um, just being 24/7, making sure that, uh, I was able to come back to my apartment safely. That is a team that I want to be part of. That is a team that I've never seen that kind of response. Nobody in the communities that I manage across Texas has had that response. And so I just want to thank you all, uh, for that from the bottom of my heart. And I look forward to serving. I look forward to your questions.
Thank you, Mr. James. Did anyone have any questions for the nominee?
Just a comment. I, I first met, uh, Brandon James about two years ago when he first moved here. And, um, after speaking to him, he showed a big willingness of wanting to serve in the community. And I, I kind of encouraged him to, to look out and see what committees he could be a part of. And I'm glad that he has applied and that he's an applicant. I believe in our conversation, you had prior experience on P N Z, correct? Brandon?
Yes, I actually served, uh, on a, the Planning and Zoning Commission essentially for, uh, they broke it up into districts in my home city of Wichita. About 70,000 people in each district. Uh, I served on that for about seven and a half years before moving to Texas.
Awesome. Well, welcome to Kyle and congratulations on your nomination for, uh, P N Z.
Any other questions? Councilmember Floris Kell.
Yes, um, so I grew up in Kansas and I was just curious why you didn't go to K State or K U, why you went to Wichita. I think everybody knows that K U does better in basketball. Um, but I'm, I'm just kidding. All that aside, um, yeah, I'm just, what brought you to Texas?
Uh, first of all, uh, K U lost to Wichita State last time they played. Um, basketball's really a big deal in Kansas. Second of all. Don't hate on Wichita State. It's an amazing college. Um, I loved it. Uh, and third of all, was the first, last part of your question, I'm sorry, you really got me with the basketball thing.
I was just curious why it brought you to Texas.
Oh, um, my girlfriend, actually. Uh, she's studying at Texas State and we had met in a conference in Dallas and, uh, we decided that if, in order for it to work, uh, and for her to finish her degree, uh, that I would come down here.
Councilmember Ellison.
Thank you. Uh, and certainly, uh, I was about to say Wichita State is very good at basketball. Uh, so I was, I was interested. She went there. Obviously Kansas has a longer, longer history of it, but it's all good. Way to stand your ground there, Brandon. Um, so I have a few questions. This is, my questions are more pertaining to the, the process. Uh, so I'm going to go ahead and make a motion because this has nothing to do with Brandon James. So I make a motion to, uh, approve the nomination of Brandon James to fill the, uh, unexpired term.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Ellison, second by Councilmember Rizzo. Is there any further discussion? Councilmember Ellison.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Um, so I had a few questions. So one, uh, how many applicants did we get for the, um, position? Total?
Twelve or 13?
Uh, yes, I believe it was 13.
13. How many were interviewed?
Six.
Five? Six, six were on the list. I'm not sure all six actually showed up. I think one person, although was scheduled, didn't, didn't attend. So I believe there were, there were five actual interviews conducted.
Five interviews conducted, attempted to do six?
That's correct.
Okay. What was a part of the decision making to, uh, interview the five or six out of the 13?
Um, the, the review of the submittal materials from each of the applicants, including their, their resumes and cover letters. Um, we, we looked at the, the past experience and, um, the, the nature of their, um, really their, their professional life up to this point, um, and the, the amount of experience that they had with the subject matter.
So, so the overall, um, resume and, uh, experience with planning and zoning?
That's, that's what make, that's what created the shortlist. Yes, sir.
And who was a part of the decision making to make the, uh, narrow the list from 13 to the five or six?
It was the mayor, the city manager, the chair of P N Z and myself, the director of planning and zoning.
So that was a collective decision to, uh, select the six out of the 13? Based on reviewing the resumes and criteria?
Selecting the six was also a function of my staff. So I had the planning staff read through them as well as myself. Um, and we recommended the six. We recommended the shortlist.
So planning and zoning i- is a very broad, um, discipline and subject matter. I, I myself along with the, uh, we, I have another colleague on the council that served a term on planning and zoning. It's some of the best experience I've, I've ever had. Uh, it certainly, uh, shortened the learning curve for me being on council. However, I did not have much of any experience. Um, I, my profession is banking and finance. Uh, I was just involved, uh, citizens of community. I coached youth football, um, involved with the chamber, various different things like that. However, it was obviously, admittedly, it was a different time. Uh, we couldn't find people to be on P N Z. Uh, this was back in 2015, uh, and we certainly didn't have 13 applicants, uh, applying. So that is very different. So I think it's a good problem to have, to have so many people now applying and, and interested in wanting to participate, uh, in our community, uh, as Mr. James stated earlier. So going back here, so planning staff essentially reviewed the applications and made a determination, uh, to recommend to the rest of the body, which included the mayor, city manager, yourself, and the, uh, planning and zoning chair on the six that they would recommend for y'all to interview. Correct?
Yes, staff, staff created the shortlist for those other four to participate in the in-person interviews. Yes.
And I know you don't have staff here with you. And I know we talked about the subject matter in general. But what were some of the things you all were looking for? Because once again, it's, it's a very broad topic, um, for narrowing that down to those six.
The, the, I, the, the, the professional experience that they had had and the expectation of what their knowledge would be of the subject matter moving forward. Additionally, uh, outside commitments, um, whether or not somebody would be able to be, uh, available for our meetings on the second and fourth Tuesdays. Prior experience in group settings like boards and commissions and other boards of directors. And the, the, any, any knowledge that they would have had with real estate or land development or, or anything that could be a, um, a, a tangential understanding, um, of the, the subject matter they could expect moving forward.
Thank you. Um, certainly, uh, appreciate that. Once again, I, I do realize that it's a, a larger group than, uh, from my experience. Based on that though, I'm not, um, I'm not sure. I'll speak for myself. I wouldn't have been eligible to be interviewed for this prior to my council, uh, experience. Um, and there's probably some of my colleagues as well, uh, that wouldn't have been eligible for that. There are current P N Z members, uh, serving as well as past ones that I've served with that have been great planning and zoning commissioners without that particular experience. Um, so I guess I'm trying to understand that if, if we, if, um, you know, obviously i- i- it would be com- become competitive because there's a lot of people applying for it. But it, do we have a set criteria of what boxes you need to be able to check in order to get on, for example, this planning and zoning commission?
No, I don't believe it.
Or is it subjective to the, the staff that is reviewing the resumes and applications?
It is. The, the, the shortlist, I would say, would be subjective based upon, um, the, the quality of the candidate pool that we look through.
Gotcha. So I guess that's where I'm getting at and that I see that that could perhaps be a concern. So if, if it is, um, just the subjectivity of staff looking through resumes to find who has a connection to planning and zoning engineering background, things like that. One, two points. One, I think we're missing out on a lot of citizens that can participate in, in our, our planning and zoning commission or other boards and commissions. Uh, once again, using myself as an example, there, there are others that are serving currently on our planning and zoning. There are that example. But yet have been rock stars and amazing planning and zoning commissioners. So I, I, I caution us to use professional experience as the criteria for narrowing down even the interview process. Now, if it came down to you all interviewed all of these folks and then it was so tight that you had to find little nitpicky ways to get it down, I could see that being a part of the process. But the fact that you know, they were already narrowed down just because their resume didn't have engineering background or planning and zoning background or something like that. I, I struggle with that. So, um, outside of that, was there any other parameters that kept the number from interviewing all 13?
Um, I, I, I think we interviewed a manageable number, um, based upon the, the, the expectation of the time that we had to do so. We had about, uh, two or three days at the remainder of that week. That was leading up to the week that led up to the, you know, the, the snow event, but they, they were looking to be confirmed at the meeting on the 16th. Um, and it, we had scheduled the interviews from between Wednesday, the 10th and Friday, the 12th. Um, and, and so we realized, I would imagine that the, the shortlist of the six were the ones that were most likely to be chosen. So those were the ones that were interviewed first.
Most likely to be chosen. What, what do you mean by that?
We hire our volunteers for the P N Z board based upon the same criteria that we use to hire any employee in the city. If we have a job that's open and you have 13 applicants that apply for the job, you find the ones that appear through the information that they submit to the city to be the most qualified to perform the job. So it's their resume that gets them to the table. And then it's the conversation at the table that gets them the position. So first you're trying to find out who can do the work. Then you're trying to find out who you want to work with. So if we went through the 13 applications and we found that were six, there were six of them that appeared through their written submittal to be more experienced, more qualified and likely more adept to be higher performers in the position. Those were the ones that were chosen to have an interview in person.
I understand. And I'm going to u- use your, uh, use your comments there. So you're saying that for our boards and commissions that are volunteer boards and commissions, we're using the same criteria that we use to hire people to be on payroll. Now typically, when you're hiring people to be on payroll, there's a job description with a list of criteria and different, uh, credentials that they need to, in, in order to carry out said job. Do we have that codified or available for citizens on any of our boards and commissions?
Yes, we do. Um, it's, it's located on the, the webpage under, um, volunteers for folks who want to apply for that. And it talks a little bit about what the nature of the responsibility of the job would be.
Right. But as far as, so a, a general job description, but as far as, uh, credentials in order to do the job, there aren't many besides living in the area for 12 months, being a, a, a citizen of Kyle, obviously not have, having owed the city of Kyle anything like that. There may be two or three others that I'm missing, but not anything to do with their education, professionalism, or any other background information like that, though. Correct?
Correct.
So that would not be the same then as hiring people to be on payroll for a company or a governmental entity?
Mayor, can I jump in? Would that be all right?
Sure.
Is that okay, Councilmember Ellison?
Yes, I, Howard was not the one to really be the one to have to answer all these questions. It's certainly anyone who was a part of it.
So maybe I can add a little bit of context. We, so I believe I'm going back to 2015 in my recollection here when, uh, definitely former council, I think, I believe everybody was different. Uh, but there was a, a major overhaul to the boards and commissions ordinances. And as part of that overhaul, the criteria was changed on how, uh, volunteers from the community were selected to serve. Prior to that point, uh, there were quite a few boards and commissions and the, the criteria for selecting individuals was fairly non-existent, just like what you're getting at here. What the council found at the time was that appointments were made predominantly for political purposes and favoritism. Not to say that they didn't do a great job, but there wasn't a great understanding of what qualified our volunteers to serve. And that's how this selection committee was birthed. And the, the individuals, meaning the mayor, the city manager, uh, the chair of the board was, was selected at that time per the ordinance change to be kind of the criteria makers. And, uh, then bring that back to council for discussion and ratification. So we have operated under those parameters. Yes, there are certain guidelines. Uh, you know, minimum qualifications for each board, uh, on our website. But at the end of the day, you know, we're still following those guidelines that set out for us from 2015. So, you know, if that does need to change, we're, we're open to it, but, but we have been following that process ever since.
Yes, sir. And I appreciate you, uh, clarifying on that. Um, because those things need to be brought to light because not everybody may have been paying attention or been, uh, been around for that. So thank you for that. I just want to make a clear distinction, though, that, that a volunteer board and commission is not the same as hiring somebody to be on payroll for the city. Correct? Mr. Sellers?
I went through all 12. Uh, that was not the criteria that I used, uh, but I.
It depends on your, your definition of what, you know, if we're, if they're being hired for a police officer, for example, we're not, you know, interviewing them on that basis. But, uh, I don't do the parks board interviews anymore. That, uh, was designated to Councilor Rizzo. But the same thing, when I did parks board interviews, one of the first questions we asked is, can you name all the parks in the city? And it's not just about qualifications. It's about whether in the application and in the interview process, they explain, uh, and show an interest, a knowledge, a general working understanding of what they're applying for and a particular interest in trying to fulfill that, uh, that role. And so sometimes applicants come forward uh, and they want to serve in a particular capacity, but it's clear through their application or in some other way that they are more qualified for a different board, for example, uh, or maybe that they're just trying to serve and they don't know exactly and they see a position they're applying. And it's our job to try to sift down and find the person who really matches qual- with qualifications, which is the word that has been, uh, used for, uh, boards and commissions. uh, used for, uh, uh, boards and commissions as a definer, a distinguisher. Uh, for many, many years, we've had these discussions on this dais together for many, many years about qualifications. At one point it was argued that we should just draw names out at straw, straws out of a hat. Uh, as a, being the opposite end of that argument. We were all here when that discussion took place and participated in it. Uh, at the end of the day, we came up with a policy that we thought would bring forward the least partisan, least political, most qualified person, taking into account not just a particular set of skills, but also how long they've lived in the city, what their general temperament is, um, and a variety of other factors that are hard to put down into a particular piece of paper. We follow the same process that we have always followed as it relates to bringing forward, uh, sifting through applicants and trying to nominate the people who are the most qualified or the best prepared to serve based on the group, uh, that was brought forward. There's a reason that it's a panel. Uh, you know, we're trying to follow that as, as best as we can. If there's a, if what you're saying is that you don't think that those factors and, you know, then we can't, we can go back to the, we'll interview all thirteen. We can make it based on, you know, whether you live east, west, we can make it based on, uh, how long you've lived in the city. We can set the qualifications or the, 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 the process to favor anything that we, that we would like as a board or as a body. That's our, that's our prerogative. But back in 2015, when this was initially set forward, it was very clearly articulated what the process would be. We followed that process the same way that every P and Z nominee and I, and as, as well as the next round of nominees that are coming forward on the next agenda item.
Absolutely. Thank you, uh, Mayor. So, um, I, I definitely think that we're in a different place six years, uh, a- ago from where we were. Um, I, I certainly at that time, I don't think we even expected to have this many applicants apply for our volunteer boards and commissions. But once again, I think this is a, a good problem. Um, I just, you know, once again, there are certain, uh, criteria and qualifications that are, are need to be met. I mentioned a few of them, living in, in the, uh, district or area in which you want to serve for at least 12 months, being a resident of Kyle, uh, not owing the city in any fines or fees and different things like that. Those are the credentials in order to, to beat the, the bare standard. And that's what is provided for citizens to see. If there was something where it provided, uh, you were needed to have an engineering background or pa- past experience, governmental experience or something like that, then we need to outline that. If we don't have that outlined and if we aren't also following up with people, for your example, to let them know, you know, maybe there's another board they're better qualified for, or, or that they didn't get this chance. We should be following up with e- each and every person, whether they get it or they don't, for whatever reason, each and every time. So that, that is just, you know, I'm maybe harping on this, but that is the difference between, um, getting people for a volunteer board or commission and hiring people. Either way, we have a set criteria out there for people to look at and review, as Mr. Sellers mentioned, i- is on the website. But that, that was it. It was not a criteria of, you know, all these other different professional backgrounds and credentials that you needed. And so I think that's where it kind of leaves us open to, well, if there's so much subjectivity in this and, and other and certain folks, um, wading through these applications in order to put them to the fore that will do the interviewing. I think that should really be on the four that are, they're interviewing to make that, that decision, one. And then two, to the point earlier, uh, you were talking about, you know, not really knowing what people might have to offer or what they might understand. Or like you said about the parts question, we don't know that unless you interview them. Uh, you certainly can't tell that from an application or a resume a lot of times. And so, um, uh, I, I will release the floor after this, but I just want to caution us on that. And I think it's something that we should review and look at now that we are seeing that there is a lot of interest in our boards and commissions. Um, because we have a lot of talented folks out there that may not have the most relative experience, but could be an asset to our city. And we want everyone to feel welcomed and that they can contribute to what, what we are doing here in this city. Um, so th- those are my points and I, I, I understand that the, the best course of action from here is to bring forward a future agenda item in order to review those procedures. Once again, I wanted to clarify on this. This is nothing about Brandon James. That's why I wanted to make the motion. I, I'm happy to a- approve him for this, uh, position. I think he's going to do an outstanding job. I did read his resume. I think he is, uh, definitely a qualified, uh, person in our city and I, I love his enthusiasm. Um, thank you for sending that policy, Howard. But once again, it, it does not want to lay out that somebody needs certain criteria besides the residential ones and things like that. I, I certainly appreciate that so we can all be on the same page, though, sir. Um, so that, that was my, my point and I certainly appreciate you all, um, sharing the thought process and what happened, uh, on how we got to the point where we are. Thank you.
Any further comments?
I just have a question for Mr. Allison. Uh, Mr. Allison, would you be okay with them, with the city interviewing all the applicants?
I- in this particular case, if they would have interviewed all thirteen?
Correct. Just like overall, I, because I kind of get the feeling like you're saying, hey, we don't need to be weeding out these people. Because as the mayor just said, we can't look at a piece of paper and tell from a piece of paper if these people have the qualifications. So my question is, this application was submitted December 10th, which was approximately 11 years, lead years, 11 weeks ago. So could we have interviewed all of the applicants and still been at the meeting today? And also is that what you-
Right. Because we close, we, yes, to answer your question, uh, I would be, uh, I would be satisfied if all thirteen were, uh, interviewed. Uh, the application process went through the end of December, uh, certainly staffing, correct me if I'm wrong. So the application process was cut at the end of December. It's now February twenty, twenty-third that we are on that. So, uh, certainly, uh, I, I would, yes, I would be in favor of, of that application process or the interview process to the point you just made. You can't tell everything from someone's resume and what's on the application. Certainly you can weed out anybody that doesn't meet the minimum criteria that's set forth and, and advertised. But beyond that, um, I would be in favor of everyone who meets those minimum criteria that we spoke about earlier uh, and meet the policy to be interviewed.
I, I totally agree with that.
And then, and then told if they didn't get it, uh, responded, followed up on that.
Any other comments?
Wait, just to clarify, we're not following up with these with other people who don't get it past the first?
Uh, it's been brought to my attention that it hasn't been consistent. I think that can be cleared up, uh, very easily. Um, I don't think that's something that I, I'm, you know, belabor the point on, but, um, yeah, just, you know, following up, letting people know if they didn't get it or to point the mayor made earlier, if there's a board or commission that it's felt they better be suited for, then, you know, that communication is well-
I gotta second that too. As somebody who has applied for a job and not ever been called back, um, that's kind of frustrating. But if you are volunteering for a city, the least we can do is follow up and say, hey, we didn't pick you for this. You can even say, hey, we might suggest that you go over here or over there. Um, but yeah, I think I, I would like to see the city doing some type of follow-up.
These applicants were followed up with, FYI. So it's a good conversation. It is true. I agree with that, that, that's always helpful. Doesn't always happen, but they were communicated with. Any other discussion?
Mayor, we have a nomination in a second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. Next up-
Thank you, James. Welcome to the team.
Mr. James, Brandon. Uh, next up, agenda number five.
Thank you, Brandon.
Consider nominations and take possible action for reappointment to the Kyle Parks and Recreation Board to fill expired terms. Uh, Ms. Mariana Espinoza.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Mariana Espinoza, Parks and Recreation Department Director for the record. We have two recommendations for park board appointments this evening, uh, to fill these two vacancies. Uh, seven applicants were called in for interviews and four responded and were interviewed. Myself, along with our park board chair, Amanda Stark, our chief of staff, Jerry Hendricks, city council member, Rizzo, uh, all served on the interview panel. Our park board chair, Amanda Stark, planned to be with us this evening, however, is, um, unable to do so. So on behalf of our park board chair, we would like to recommend, um, Victor Medina and Roman Womack for appointment to the Park and Recreation Board. Mr. Medina is a journeyman electrician with previous experience serving the community through his work at church. Mr. Womack is a veteran and an entrepreneur. Both Mr. Medina and Mr. Womack were selected from a qualified pool of applicants. Uh, we are very excited to recommend them both for appointment to the park board. And they are both joining us this evening on the call should you guys have any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Espinoza. Any questions or comments? Councilor Rizzo?
Just comment. Um, first of all, let me say that all four co- uh, applicants were amazing. It, it's, it's really, it was really difficult to pick two out of the four because you wanted to appoint all four. They were that amazing. All four showed really great initiative, came up with some great ideas. Uh, one of the things that stuck out was Mr. Roman, Mr. Womack was, uh, thinking outside the box. Uh, something that stepped, he had, he had experience in, uh, music, uh, programming, uh, putting on events, musical events. Comes back from a big background, but he also, um, was thinking outside the box, thinking about like a, a chest, uh, turning them outside, things like that. Places to go out and do things besides just sports. Just going out and enjoying the outdoors. Uh, but I, I thought he was a great applicant. He's young, he's energetic, wants to get involved and he, I, I think he's going to be a great addition to the parks board. Mr. Vadeen- Medina has had, um, a lot of experience in the community as far as, uh, being a part of meetings, setting budgets, uh, working, um, 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 with programming, uh, just a little bit of everything. I, I mean, uh, I, I'll, I'll tell you right now that I, I've known Mr. Medina quite a few years now and, uh, his work ethic is great. Uh, he cares about the community, cares about the young people, um, has, uh, helped provide scholarships for young people as well. Helped provide some programming, some events, uh, and I think he's going to be a great addition as well.
Thank you, Mr. Rizzo. Any questions or comments? A motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Flores Cales. Are any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero.
Welcome.
Just one last thing. Mariana, we did, uh, contact the, the other two applicants? You're muted. You're muted.
Yes, I spoke with both applic- I spoke with both applicants.
Thank you. Thank you, Mariana. Appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, next up, uh, we're going to postpone six, seven, and eight. We'll switch to item number nine, presentation of the 2020 Annual Racial Profiling Report. Chief Barnett.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Jeff Barnett, Chief of Police, for the record. Tonight, we're here to present the 2020 Racial Profiling Report as required by the Texas Code of Criminal Procedures. This report's required to be submitted to the governing body of the Police Department on or before March the first of each year. You'll have in your backup material four documents. You have the Kyle Police Department Racial Profiling Policy 2.2. You have the Kyle Police Department Annual Report that's submitted to TCO, which is our licensing agency, and the requiring clearinghouse for these reports. Plus you have two memorandum each from Captain Hernandez and Lieutenant Griffith. As each of you may recall, the state of Texas enacted a law requiring certain actions on behalf of lo- of local law enforcement agencies and individual law enforcement officers when conducting traffic or pedestrian stops. The Kyle Police Department has a policy that clearly defines racial profiling and prohibits officers from engaging in racial profiling as defined by state law. And our officers are directed to capture certain types of data pertaining to traffic and pedestrian des- uh, detentions with members of the public. Kyle Police Department vehicles that routinely engage in traffic and pedestrian stops are outfitted with audio and video recording equipment. Additionally, the patrol officers and traffic officers are outlined, or I'm sorry, were outfitted with body worn cameras for additional recording. These videos are retained for a period of not less than 90 days and they're reviewed annually by supervisors as required by that state statute. Also required by, by law. The Kyle Police Department does have a publicly promoted process by which an individual may file a complaint if the individual believes that a Kyle Police Officer has engaged in racial profiling. Information on the process may be obtained from a variety of sources to include the city's webpage, the front lobby of the Police Department, and from the Kyle Police Department staff. In addition, every person that receives a written citation is provided information on how to file a complaint. Furthermore, the Kyle Police Department did not receive any complaints pertaining to racial profiling during this reporting period. That information is outlined in the MMO supplied by Captain Hernandez. I can go into, uh, the, uh, detail of the data. Uh, one of the most important that people tend, that we extract from this is a breakdown of our traffic stop data by race or ethnicity as defined by the state law. The Kyle Police Department conducted 8,179 motor vehicle and pedestrian stops. The informations included in those traffic stops and the breakdown by race and ethnicity was as follows. Operators that were identified as black was 11.89%. Operators identified as Asian Pacific Islander is 1.31%. Caucasian represented 39.49%. Hispanic or Latino, 46.67%. Alaska Native American Indian was 0.06%, uh, rounding just shy of 100% for the stops. Lieutenant Griffith conducted his annual, uh, review of the data and found adherence to policies and state law consistent with our policies as well. A brief overview of his findings were also included in his memorandum. I could go into further detail, but I certainly want to make certain that the, that the Mayor and Council would like to hear those details as an individual breakdown by category, or if you would like for me to stop here and, uh, entertain questions.
Any questions for the chief? Sorry.
Chief, Councilmember Rizzo, I just want to s- uh, thank you for such a detailed report. Um, I learned a lot from it last year and I enjoyed, uh, looking at it again this year. I think we do a great job here in the city of Kyle and, uh, uh, thank your officers as well. And, uh, thank you, chief.
Thanks, sir.
Councilmember Flores Cale, for the record, I have a question. Did I hear you right when you said there was, there was no complaints for racial profiling? At the city of Kyle?
That's correct, ma'am. And that's correct, ma'am. In this, in this one-year category for reporting, we had zero complaints for racial profiling.
All right. Good job and thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, motions? Do we, do you need a motion, chief, or do you just have to present the facts?
No, sir. State law just simply requires we provide this to the governing body.
Thank you. Councilor Allison?
Thank you. Uh, certainly, uh, appreciate, um, the report, um, Chief Barnett and, um, providing the data and to your, uh, staff. I know, um, Captain Hernandez and Lieutenant Griffith were a big part of helping put this together and any others, uh, certainly appreciate their help. Um, I know TCO has made some, uh, adjustments to their reporting and, uh, that went into effect this year. And I was happy to see, which I will say, I didn't expect it not to be. But I was happy to see very thorough e- explanations and, and a complete, um, a completion of all the forms that were required for TCO. Uh, TCO has come under scrutiny, uh, recently in the past year and some other agencies that aren't, uh, haven't been reporting their numbers. But I'm happy to say, uh, certainly in the time I've been on council and as far as I can remember since I've lived in this city, I've seen these reports happen before March first and have been in, uh, compliance with that, with reporting their, uh, our numbers. So, uh, my sincerest thanks for that and, and being, uh, a part of that and making sure we're on top of that every year and not being one of those that have come out in the news within the past year that aren't doing that. So thank you, chief, and to your staff.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Um, the other thing, so I, I'll be honest with my colleagues. I actually do have a number of questions on that, um, on this, um, agenda item. But I would like, uh, if, if we could bang, um, this back next week, uh, to talk on, on our first, uh, council agenda item, uh, to talk about this, uh, I'd certainly appreciate that.
Works for me. Any, uh, any other, anybody else? Everybody okay with that? Any other questions or comments? All right, we're going to move on to agenda item number 11, CIP Road Projects and Consent Agenda Presentation. Mr. Barbara.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Leon Barba, City Engineer. Turn this on here. Let me start off with the Lehman and Burleson Street project. We're still trying to close that project out. Uh, we're still sitting on the retainage for that project because we're waiting for those projects to be completely done before we, uh, release any additional money on those projects. On the Windy Hill Street project, uh, we're 22% complete. We did complete our change order number one. number one. Unfortunately, we think we have another change order coming in, so we'll be working on that. The contractor today is working on the south half of Wendy Hill Road. There are still some intermittent street closures at Indian Paintbrush and Cherrywood. For now, the Indian Paintbrush is open, but Cherrywood is closed, and we're expecting this all to be wrapped up hopefully by March 23rd of this month. This is not a current picture, but we'll get you a new picture at the next council meeting. It's pretty well the same condition that you see there. The South Side wastewater improvements, so we went a little bit on the completion. It's about 75% complete. The contractor's working on the driveway by the pause facility. We're, as I mentioned before, we still have to do a few more things in the wet well, so we were planning to do the, some coatings on those manholes in the wet well, but the recent weather that we've had, and ice weather has just kind of delayed a lot of things for us on, on some of these projects. But we're also waiting on a manhole on the west side of the I-35 that is where the Elliott Branch project's going to tie into. So that's currently under, we're trying to get that manhole in so we can tie in that Elliott Branch project, because that's where they tie in on the west side of I-35. On the Expansion Project, we're at 42% complete. Obviously, we didn't have any work done last week. We're still trying to de-water the area, and they were planning to start some concrete, or concrete work today. The, still working on the basic stuff, treatment pipe, formwork and rebar. They're still setting rebar and trying to pour concrete. At this point, there's no deviations in the, in the progress, but we may expect to see the contractor ask for some time, maybe because of this recent weather. So we'll see what happens with that. As, as far as we know, we're still expecting to be online by March of 2022. I mentioned it three weeks ago that they were getting ready to pour the foundation for the operations building, and as you can see, they did complete that, and there's still a little bit of water sitting out there. Unfortunately, I understand there might be some more rain coming in later this weekend, so that's not a good thing. The Bun Creek Interceptor, as I mentioned at the last meeting, the contractor-
But what will the temperature be, Leon? Sorry, I had to throw it in there. Sorry, go ahead.
I can, I can handle the temperatures. The, the wet, the wet weather's not going to help us, but the weather, the weather's, the temperature's going to be fine. On the Bun Creek Interceptor, as I mentioned before, we did have, one of the contractors' folks had an incident with COVID, so they had to reorganize their section, but they, then they got started again, and just as soon as they got started, then they had to shut it down because of the, the snow and ice weather that we had. But once it drives out, hopefully they'll start again on that project. Well, site number four, if you've driven by there, that's the last coat of paint. It's looking really nice. What we have to try to figure out now is how to get that logo up there, so that should be the last item. Then we'll expect to see them requesting the final payment for the, the completion of that project. And of course, we'll have to have a punch list and make sure that they clean up everything that we want done. So this one's almost getting ready to be completed.
Leon, before you move on to the next one, you mentioned the, the logo. I thought I heard maybe Scott saying something about that we're just going to put the Kyle and the Texas, and we're going to take the smaller fine print off. Is that correct?
No.
No, that's the 1626, or that's well site number four. I know what that is now. It's funny. The original logo, like there's the, there's the most recent one we did that says "Established 18," but you can't really read it, and I thought I heard you, or maybe Samantha or somebody saying, "Let's just get the, the K, the Texas K-Y-L-E, basically just what's in blue, and have that be as large as it can be," as opposed to the City of Kyle, you know, that brand.
Right. We, we had talked about that specifically for this downtown tower because it's so small, but I mean, that's something we could do on any of our towers.
Well, what I'm, I'm just, I'm just curious, is that, is my expectation that that's the way it's going to be? Is that the way it's going to be? Just going to say Kyle on the tower?
On, on this one or on downtown? Sorry.
The one in the picture.
Colors. I don't believe so.
Uptown.
On this one, we're expecting to put the same logo that we have on the other structures.
So the one that's in the top left corner of the graphic?
The brand. Yes.
As opposed to it just saying the Kyle? Okay. Is it too late to change? We want to, does anybody?
We can-
I thought Kyle, big and large, made more sense because that you can't read the small stuff on the other towers.
Mayor, I can get with the contractor tomorrow morning, first thing, and see if that's what we want, if, how far along they are, so we can figure that, see if we can do that.
Remove the green and the red.
That, that's my thought. I'm, I'm a lone actor on that. I just overheard somebody say that. I thought it was a good idea, and since you brought it up, I thought I would, I would bring it up as well. Taking the red, "Established 1880" in the city of, and having it, and that way you can actually increase the font of just, just Kyle with the Texas. Thoughts?
Mayor, I will find out how far along they are.
What was the other tower you were talking about, Scott?
Downtown.
That's, that's the, that's, you're talking about the old historic, I'm not talking about that. I'm just talking about this one.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, the one up above us says just Kyle, but it's also kind of consistent.
You're not doing anything to this one, right?
We are, but we're just taking the pipe off.
Okay.
Correct.
There's a pipe covering that L. That's not what, that's not what Leon's talking about on this one.
Okay. I thought we were changing the logo on it or something, downtown. All right, just making sure. Thank you.
Does anybody-
Actually, Mayor, we were, actually, Mayor, we were trying to center that logo so it could face colors, directly face colors, but the overflow pipe there is, is kind of pushing back over to the southwest side, so we're still trying to see if we're going to be able to make it fit there. So it's, we, I don't know if we've ironed that out yet. I don't know if Tim Sanford's on the line, but maybe he could fill us in on where, where they landed on that, because they had a meeting out there today, I understand, to, to talk about it. I guess Tim's not on. I'll, I'll find out some more information on that tomorrow.
Okay. I, I agree with Councilmember Rizzo on that Colar's Crossing one, this one in the picture, that we should put the red hat on it and paint the underpart blue as an homage to this water tower right next to us. So, good idea. If we're up for changing things, then I'm going to agree with Councilmember Rizzo on that one.
On El Post Road, we have a meeting with the county tomorrow. Actually, it was supposed to have been last week, but actually that got postponed. We are still working with the owners of the property that we need to negotiate our right of way, so we're getting closer and closer to that. So we'll see how fast we can move on that. But I did talk to Jerry Borstein with the county Monday. He's still planning to start March 1st, so we just need to get it staked out for him, so, and that's going to happen Friday. So we're hoping that he can go ahead and get started, and this rain doesn't slow us down at all. So that's our plan for now. On the Cassette Ranch Roundabout, according to the developer's engineer, they're 95% complete. The north connection is open. They still have some pavers and some ramp, ADA ramps, some sidewalk signs, and stropping that they needed to complete there. I've tried to get an idea from them of what they plan to do on the meeting with that curb, and I still haven't gotten a response from them, so I'll keep asking them what their plans are and how soon they can get that revised or fixed up. On the Paramount Subdivision, according to the developer, they're approximately 50% complete, and they're thinking another three or four weeks for completion. We have a couple of consent agenda items. These are amendments to engineering contracts. This particular one on item 12 is to LJA Engineering. We have two easements that we need to acquire to do this portion of Slimmer, this first, reclaiming our first phase of the Slimmer wastewater project to eliminate some of the I and I that we have in the downtown area. But this amendment number three requires that we do some more coordination. We had to do some more coordination with Uni-Pacific. We had to revise our design to meet some of their requirements, and we had to go back, I think, two or three times with them to finally get that, then to allow us to put the line in their easement, and we were successful in finally coming up with an alignment with them, but unfortunately, that changed our design. We also need to acquire another property that's private property, so we're going to have to do an appraisal and work with that owner to acquire an easement on their property. So this, this amendment covers that additional cost. On the South Side wastewater improves, because of the duration of the project, we're having to pay the consultant for the additional time it takes to do our progress meetings or project visits, and we do have some design changes that we need to do on this project because we revised the easements on one, one of, one of the properties, and on the other one, we're actually pushing, we're not using the easement, we're actually going out and text out right of way, so we're having to redesign that section there. So that also ties into the Edwards Drive wastewater line, so that's why the Edwards Drive line hasn't been completed yet, because we, we needed to tie into that particular intersection right there is where we tie in the Edwards Drive project and the South Side project. So we're going to wrap that up and get that wrapped up so we get it over to the contractor to get him, to complete this project. There's two items for easements. This is one line, actually, but also several, two properties, and that's just a conveyance of these two wastewater line easements that we need for our wastewater line. And that's my presentation. Do you have any questions?
Leon's, Mayor?
Go ahead.
Leon, it's Councilmember Rizzo. You said March of '22 for the wastewater treatment plant to be online?
Yes, sir. That's, yes, March of '22.
I'm, I'm going to challenge you to, to make that a sooner startup date, and the reason why is that, I don't know if you saw during the storms at San Marcos, had an incident there in their area with their wastewater treatment plant, and I, I started, you know, when this started, I started thinking about ours, and kept thinking about how important it is to get our, our new wastewater treatment plant online and up and going. So I'm going to encourage you, I'm going to challenge you, Leon, to get this done quicker. I know you can do it, but really, as a city, I think we're, we're ready for it. Let's still build it to the specs and the standards that we want and need, but let's try to get this project going, Leon. We need it.
Well, Councilmember, fortunately, we have a really good contractor. We have a really good project manager, and they're working well together, trying to get this project completed, and if the weather would just, you know, settle down, let us continue work, we'd be, we should beat that schedule. And bear in mind, Councilmember, there's some other projects that are really going to help resolve some of the issues with our wastewater system that we have. The Bun Creek Interceptor is a very important project. That's going to provide relief for us on, by the fact that we're going to be able to decommission two lift stations. The South Lake Lift Station, that's caused us problems in the past-
Correct.
And the Bun Creek Station hasn't caused us problems, but yet that, that helps us eliminate two lift stations. Also, Bun Creek Village, Bun Creek Reserve subdivision, initially, they were going to put another lift station in that area, and so we, not only will we eliminate two lift stations, we'll also avoid putting a third lift station on, completion of that Bun Creek Interceptor. But the key thing there with that Bun Creek Interceptor, it ties into the treatment plant, and right now, the contractor has to build a manhole to accept that line, so I've got a lot of dominoes that need to fall in place over the next six to nine months. So, yes, sir, it's going to be a challenge. But again, we do have a good contractor on the treatment plant. We do have a good project manager, and she's keeping good tabs on him, so it's, everything's on our side right now for that project to be completed, if not on that date, hopefully sooner than that. Now, there may be additional change orders that we ask for additional work, and you may see another change order. I'll probably bring it to your attention next week, at the next council meeting, about the major change order that we're going to be moving forward with. It's, we're still under, with under our contingency, but it's additional work, so those, those dates may slip because of that additional work. So that's the only thing I wanted to let you know. It might hurt.
You know, you brought something up very interesting that I've been thinking about. You talked about our lift stations. With our rolling blackouts, did we have a contingency plan for that? I don't know if this is a you question or Harper question. Do we have backup generators on those lift stations?
My understanding is that we do have lift stations at those. They're, they're all generators. They should be generators. I'm not sure if they had all of them. I guess Harper would have to, would know that, but each one of our new ones does have a generator. I do know that. As we review our construction plans, our new projects, or our new lift stations for these subdivisions, that's, that's a given. They will provide a generator for those lift stations.
And my last question is, are they weather, weatherized? I was running three generators at my home, and one of them, I had a lot of trouble. I had to warm it up inside before I could get it started because the code wouldn't allow it to start. Do we have a, a plan to, that they're weatherized to make sure that those generators will fire on?
We'll have to check with Harper on that one, Councilmember.
All right. Leon, thank you.
Yes, and I do want to mention that we did the design for the, we didn't design the generator, but we designed, we handled the design for the installation of the generator at Public Works they were using for the, for the, for the event, the emergency room. So that was a generator that our engineering department helped put together, so I'll take credit for that one.
Awesome.
Thank you, Leon.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Barba? All right, next up, Consent Agenda. We need to pull item number 16 at the request of the applicant, so we're looking at 12 through 15, and 17 and 18.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items listed except for 16.
It's been moved by Councilmember Rizzo, seconded by Mayor Protim Coach, that we approve agenda items 12, 13, 14, 15, 17, and 18. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Was that a yes on you, Councilperson Ellison? I, I didn't see the screen or, all right. Motion carries seven to zero. Next up, agenda item number 19, First Reading and Ordinance of the City of Kyle, Texas, amending the City of Kyle Code of Ordinances, Chapter 29, Signs, Standards, and Permits, to amend the definition of billboard, amending provisions related to prohibited signs, establishing maximum size and height of signs, providing a severability clause, providing effective date, and related matters, signs.
Mayor and Council, page signs for the record. This ordinance amends the city's sign ordinance to do a couple of things. First of all, the city is authorized to regulate and prohibit billboards in the city sign, the city's current sign ordinance does so. This ordinance is being proposed to respond to case law that was passed recently by the Fifth Circuit, which challenges the city's ability to regulate signs by distinguishing between them being on-premise and off-premise signs. An off-premise sign is one that describes goods or services that are produced outside of the property where the sign is located. So what this ordinance does is it changes the definition of billboard so that it's not referred to as a sign that regulates off-premise goods and services. It's, it's described as a sign based on its size. So the definition of billboard is changed to be defined as a sign that's generally identified by industry standards. There's industry standards that, that describe a billboard by its size. This includes electronic variable messaging signs, but in absence of that industry standard, then the billboard is defined as a sign having a height greater than 12 feet and a surface area greater than 378 square feet. So that is one change that is made. The ordinance would not be, the ordinance currently prohibits billboards, and then this definition of billboard would, would be revised within your sign code. In addition to that, we, you have a section in your sign code that has a list of prohibited signs. We changed one of the paragraphs in that provision to note that that list of signs is prohibited unless the city council approves the, something different by agreement, because that would take into account the agreement that you have with Reagan National Advertising for the, the off-premise digital billboard that you currently have in place. So this amendment to the ordinance would recognize that exceptions to prohibited billboards would be if there's an agreement with the city council and only for the term of the agreement. In addition to that, we add one additional prohibition against signs, and that, those would be signs that exceed a surface area that it, that is greater than 160 square feet, or the maximum size established by the category or definition that applies to the sign. You've got different areas of the city that are allowed to have different size of signs depending on where they are. For example, the I-35 corridor in certain locations allows signs that are 210 square feet in size, and so those, that would continue to be allowed. And in addition to that, the signs that exceed 12 feet or the maximum height that's established by the, the category in your ordinance, those are prohibited as well. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Paige. Any questions? Motions?
So, Paige, Mayor?
Councilperson Ellison.
Thank you. So I read through this ordinance, or the amendments to the change, and I was listening to your explanation here. So you said it essentially did two things. One, the first one was you, you said to get in compliance with a, a change in law, correct?
Correct.
And which part of that, is that section, which, which exactly part of that? Is that section 3A?
That's three, section two, that's the definition of billboard.
Definition.
So the definition, your billboards are no longer identified as an off- So the definition, your billboards are no longer identified as an off-premise sign, because if we regulate based on what the sign says, then that is contrary to what the law allows.
Understood. Thank you. I appreciate that. Uh, the second part, so the, the, the second change to amendment is 3A and 3B together?
Correct.
And once again, quick nutshell, what essentially is, is, is happening with 3A and 3B?
So what, so the city has a list of prohibited signs, and so you'll see in 3A, we refer to Section 299, prohibited signs, and so that's the opening paragraph of that section in your code, and it says, "The following signs are prohibited," basically. So we needed to add the provision, the little phrase there at the end that says, um, "except as otherwise specifically permitted by the chapter or by an agreement approved by the city council." And so that's added to your, um, statement of the following signs are prohibited, because you have an agreement right now with Reagan National Advertising that allows a billboard. Um, and so that would be an exception to this general prohibition against no billboards except where the city allows it by agreement, or this ordinance maybe otherwise allows it. So we got, there's always an exception, so we're allowing for those exceptions. So that's 3A. 3B is to add kind of a catch-all prohibition against signs and just kind of a step back on, on the, the case law that addresses signs. Whenever you regulate signs, you're regulating speech, and so you have to be content neutral. You can't regulate content because you're regulating speech as a governmental entity. You've gotta relate, you've gotta regulate something neutral, like size, location, distance between signs. Those are things you can regulate. So we are, um, there, there seemed to be a gap in the ordinance that you, you prohibited billboards that were a certain size, and you allowed signs as large as 210 square feet in size, but there was this, there was this gap in between of what about the signs that are, of sizes in between that? And so we kind, we closed that gap here. We've got a default rule that says you can't have anything bigger than 160 square feet or bigger than 12 feet in height unless you've got someplace else in the ordinance that says you can have this type of sign. So that's the third thing this ordinance does. And let me step back and say one more thing, which is, um, billboards are kind of a big issue for cities, and so we've got this ordinance to address billboards and make sure you can enforce that regulation. Um, there's still some work to be done on the ordinance because it addresses smaller signs in an off, that are described as off-premise, but that's gonna take a little bit more thought and process to be, to, to, to have a thoughtful regulation against, for other off-premise signs. So that's something else that we're gonna need to work on and bring back to you, but we wanted to be able to go ahead and address the larger signs because that was fairly, it was a little easier to do.
Thank you, Paige. Really, really great job. Um, happy to give you some TV time. Uh, so, um, real quick to recap on that. So understood the first part, this, particularly in section, uh, 3A. So, uh, that biggest part was to make sure that our ordinance was in compliance with the agreement that we made already?
Mm-hmm, yes.
And could, just, we get a reminder on when that agreement was made?
Uh, that agreement was made, if I'm recalling correctly, I think it was made in December. I, I just, I'm sorry, I don't recall specifically, but I think it was made in December. Uh, it might have been earlier. So, um, as it stands right now, your ordinance would have prohibited billboards. Your agreement was fine when it was passed. It wasn't in conflict. There was nothing, there was not an issue with the agreement being adopted and you having an ordinance saying that the billboards are prohibited because the council can make different agreements, but since we're amending this ordinance anyway, let's, let's recognize those exceptions in this ordinance as well. And I thought what was important to say in here was that, that any agreement that allows a billboard, that exception granted by the agreement is only for the term of the agreement.
Understood. Thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve agenda item night, number 19.
It's been moved by Councilmember Rizzo, seconded by Councilmember Floris Kill. Is there any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries seven to zero. Uh, next up, agenda item number 20. Post, this was originally postponed. Um, Scott, are we taking action on the, this item, are we continuing to postpone? It has, the marketplace postponed till next item? All right, this item does have a public hearing that we're continuing to have, so if there are no objections, uh, I'm gonna open the public hearing. Uh, this is an ordinance amending Chapter 53, zoning of the City of Kyle, Texas, to rezone approximately 19.5 acres of land from retail services to multifamily and, um, uh, Kyle Center Drive. Uh, if there are no objections, I'm gonna open the public hearing. It's now open. Uh, the plan is to postpone till the next regularly scheduled council meeting, so I'm gonna leave the public, uh, meeting, hearing open and make a motion to postpone to the next regularly scheduled council meeting. It's been moved by the mayor, seconded by Mayor Protem Coach. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Next up, agenda item number 21. First reading and ordinance amending Chapter 53 of the City of Kyle, Texas, for the purpose of assigning original zoning to approximately 29.8 acres of land from agricultural to single-family residential R-13 for property located southeast of Lehman, uh, Road and south of Lehman High School in Hayes County, Texas. Uh, this item has a public hearing. Um, Mr. Coons?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Uh, give me one second, and I'm going to share my screen. Um, you should be able to see the staff report now. Uh, as you alluded to in the introduction, this is for approximately 30 acres, and it's located due south of Lehman High School. Uh, will be accessed through Cassetta Ranch. This is actually the finalization of some text that was in a development agreement that's been, uh, entered into between Braun Homes and the City of Kyle. Um, recently, we annexed this portion of land as it was located in the E.T.J., and now we are having the original zoning, um, that is, uh, expected for the development being assigned to it. So this is current zoning now. You can see it's adjacent to some R-13, uh, over there to the due east. That's the first phase of Cassetta Ranch, um, and they are expanding to their due west. Um, the expectation is that they would put R-13, which is single-family residential, 50-foot wide lots, and the Planning and Zoning Commission talked about this at their voting meeting in February and moved unanimously that it be, or correction, five to one, that it be approved, uh, as presented.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Coons. Uh, there's a public hearing, so with, there are no objections, I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing. Uh, it is now open. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward and speak on this item? Not seeing none, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. It is now closed. Uh, anyone have any questions for staff or the applicant or motions? Councilperson Ellison?
Um, thank you, Mayor. Um, any brief, um, feedback on the one nay vote, uh, Mr. Coons?
I don't have any information. I did not get, I believe that was, um, Commissioner Voss who voted in dissent, but I did not get a reasoning behind her motivations for the dissent.
Okay.
Scott, this is the, this is the item you had some conversation with the school district about as well. So y'all worked through a number of issues related to this particular parcel?
We did. Yes, sir.
I wasn't in those meetings, but I was tangentially aware of it. It seemed like they were productive.
The, uh, the applicant or the, the landowner worked very closely with the school district to address some concerns. I think there's still one remaining concern that they're still working on, which is, uh, the fence material and the height that's gonna go between the two, but otherwise, all the other issues have been resolved.
I think that was the only question I had, was about the fencing. They were concerned about it.
Yeah, so the school district has asked for a little higher-quality fence, which costs more than obviously the developer had in that, that line item, so they're just working on taking that piece out.
Something we wanna postpone till they work that out, or?
At this point, we're not part of those conversations, so I, I just haven't heard the resolution.
Um, you think you could put on your to-do list to reach out to the school district and find out before second reading?
Sure.
We'll bring it back for second reading?
Yes.
See where they stand on that. All right, um, I'm gonna make a motion to approve. It's been motion by the mayor, seconded by Councilwoman Bradshaw. Is there any further discussion? Uh, I was gonna say we'll bring it back either way, uh, so that we, so we'll have that discussion regardless of the vote outcome. Any other conversation piece? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries six to one. All right, next up, agenda item number 22, resolution of support for a housing tax credit application for the, the Catherine, a 55-plus affordable rental housing development, community of development funding by a local political subdivision. Councilperson Rizzo?
Yeah, Mayor, um, this first came to me a couple of weeks ago, and, uh, after speaking to a lot of residents, uh, in the past year, I know there's been a need for more, uh, housing for 55-plus folks, and so, uh, when this applicant came forward, uh, I thought it was great to meet with them. Uh, I'd like them to, um, do the little presentation. Scott?
She's here.
Oh.
Oh, there you are.
I'm sorry, I didn't know we had any more presentations.
I know she was here.
Yeah, there we go.
Awesome. You're being really quiet over there.
It'll probably come on if you just give it a second.
Okay.
There you go.
Oh, there we go. So Mayor Mitchell, Mayor Protem, Council, and City Manager Sellers, thank you for having me. Sorry, I keep wanting to look away. Um, so my name is Ena Spokis, and I'm a affordable housing developer. Um, I only do affordable housing at this point and have for the last 12 years. Uh, I live in Texas. I'm in, I live just, uh, in North Austin, and I know you guys spent a lot of time talking about the way that your community came together, and it's really heartwarming to hear that, um, I experienced the same thing in my neighborhood as well. So it was very humbling, and sorry that it took a crisis for it to happen, but, you know, it was good to see everybody there. So I just wanted to acknowledge that, um, I think that we both are fortunate to live in really wonderful neighborhoods and communities where our neighbors are there for us. So, um, Mr. Sellers, do you have my presentation? Otherwise, I have a copy as well.
I do. Um, I can get it up on the screen here just a second.
Thank you. Would, will it also pop up here?
Uh, it should.
So.
Just give me one minute here.
And I also have, um, our, so most of our architecture team was actually hit pretty hard with no power last week, but over the weekend, they gave me some preliminary renderings that were not included in the original presentation, so if you're interested, I do have those that we could, um, just two slides, if you wanted to see those as well. So.
Just hand those to Scott real fast.
So, do I control this, or do you?
Um, no, ma'am. I'll, I'll have to control for you.
Okay. I didn't know if my little keypad up here controlled it or not.
It's, do you see it up on the screen? There you go.
Yeah, I can see it. So a little bit about us, and, um, excuse me for looking at the screen versus at all of you. So we are, um, the 16th largest affordable housing develop, 16th largest affordable housing developer, uh, in the U.S. Uh, we formed in 2015. Uh, we're based out of Indianapolis, but I reside here in Texas and have been here for about 30 years. Um, and I've been doing affordable housing for the last 12. So in-house, we, besides development, we also have in-house construction, um, and, uh, asset management. Can you hear me if I don't talk into this?
You're doing great. Yeah, we can hear you just fine.
Sorry. I feel like it's almost worse. So, uh, there's some pictures of three other developments that are in the area. These are new construction. One's in Leander, one is in, uh, northeast Austin off of, um, uh, Desaw and Howard, and then one out in Lago Vista. So the Leander and the East Austin are senior developments. The one in Lago Vista is a 72-unit family development. So. So the Catherine, we named it after your Pulitzer Prize-winning author from here, um, and we wanted to tie it to the history of Kyle. So it's based on five acres. It's on Button Creek Road, uh, just a little bit, I guess, northwest, uh, from the high school. Um, and it is planned to be two elevator-served, three-story buildings, 105 units, so not very big. There's 39 one-bedroom and 66 two-bedroom. Um, and, uh, I think you can see, it's currently zoned ag, so it would need to be rezoned to multifamily, uh, in order for this to proceed. Um, it does comport with the current comprehensive plan for a land use, um, for this area. Uh, we'd probably be the first entrant into it to kind of fulfill that plan, um, but it does comport with it. And the back end of the property is where the future Kyle Parkway extension is planned for, so we did make a, uh, as you can see, like a driveway extension to nowhere for now to eventually hopefully be able to tie into that Parkway. Um, so detention in the front, there's swimming pool and amenities. Um, can you please go to the next slide? So this was just to show what the work and income profile analysis is. This is a one-mile radius, just to show that the location is pretty centrally located to a lot of jobs in the area. Next slide, please. And this is just a little bit more information, um, just to show the close proximity specifically to Seaton Hospital, a lot of medical facilities, a lot of retail shopping, um, commercial, pretty much anything you need is, uh, stone's throw from this site. Uh, so the, some of our proposed amenities, um, it'll have a full fence. We have a swimming pool. We have a separate clubhouse that's just for the residents. Uh, we'd like to have dog parks since, or bark parks, whatever you'd like to call them. Um, and the, the clubhouse typically has a lot of other activities for the age-restricted population, so this is specifically for 55-plus. Can you go to the next slide? Um, so I have new information, which I just gave, uh, Mr. Sellers, but this was the original proposal for some of the design elements of what we were trying to accomplish for what this project would look like. And then the units, there's one-bedroom and two-bedroom, um, so one-bedroom, one-bath, 725 square feet, and two-bedroom, two-bath, about 950 square feet. Uh, we also have to have accessible units per code, so there's 5% of the units will be for physically handicapped, 2% of the units are for visual and hearing handicapped, um, and those will, can be spread out throughout the whole site just because it is elevator-served, so it's not, does not have to be, um, relegated to the first floor, so they can have upper-floor units as well. Next slide, please. Uh, so the tax credit program, I believe most of you are familiar with it. I didn't know what you know and what you don't know, so the, the affordability of the units is based on what the income of people's, um, household is, uh, based on size, and these are set by HUD every year, so they do fluctuate. Um, so a little bit different than housing choice vouchers where their rent is based on their actual income. Um, this is based on a band of income, and the corresponding rents are shown as well. And then this is the breakdown of what we're proposing for the development. Uh, so we'll have, uh, 30%, 50%, 60%, and some market rate. And from when we first provided this information, um, to City Manager Sellers, uh, we've actually reduced the market rate rents a little bit to make them a little bit more affordable. So, next slide, please. So the overall cost of the project is around $21 million. So that includes, you know, acquisition costs for the land, our construction, we have financing fees, interest for the construction loan, um, and then permitting. fees, interest for the construction loan, and then permitting, parking fees, right, all the city fees for inspections, meter fees, all of those, all those soft costs. We're not seeking any sort of property tax exemption at a minimum. We think that this will generate at least $1,000 per unit in taxes, and so it was easier math, so I just kept it at 1,000, and that's sort of the breakdown of each of the entities per the current taxing rate. So we're long-term investors for these properties. It is in our best interest that they are financially feasible, that they fit well with the communities that we're in. We want to be good neighbors. We want to be a community within a community. You know, so it is it is better for everybody that these are that they're successful, right? It helps the neighborhoods, it helps it helps us be able to operate them so that people want to live there. And it also keeps crime down, it keeps neighbors happy. So besides being the investors in this, I mean, we also, you know, we don't borrow all the money, we put our own dime into it as well. And then we have to build to the same standards as everybody else does. There are no different breaks that we get or construction standards that we can build to, different than anybody else. They still go through the city's same review process and permitting process as any other builder would. We have a lot of onsite activities. We have third-party property management firms that do reach out to the local agencies in the area that can provide services to our tenants, and we like to have our community be part of the larger community that we're in. So the timeline, sorry, next slide. So yeah, so I'm here today. I didn't have a chance to change this from last week's meeting. March 1st is when our applications are due to the state agency. If there is an award of the tax credits, that won't be announced until probably mid-July is when it's finalized. And then we would start our full design process, go through the building permit process, and we wouldn't close until 2022, and construction wouldn't start until then, and then it would take probably 12 to 18 months to complete. So and then if you have are able to open the USB file, these are just some drawings that are architected. Sorry, I don't know if you. And then if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them, of course.
Does anybody have any questions for the applicant or Mr. Rizzo?
So there is a, I'm sorry, Mayor.
Councilor Ellison.
So there's an I saw that there was a pre-development meeting with staff in January, so is there an actual application for rezoning anticipated, or because we keep calling the applicant, just wanted to.
So I need to submit a rezoning application before I turn in the tax credit app, but if I don't have the support of the city, then I didn't want to waste anybody's time submitting a zoning application. So if the city is supportive, then we will finish up our zoning application and get that submitted.
So the question before council is, are we, you know, looking in the future, thinking we're comfortable zoning multifamily there at that site? And if multifamily, going the additional step to making it a affordable housing project? That's essentially the question before us. Thoughts, comments, questions? Councilor Rizzo.
So Mayor, one of the things that I've picked up from the residents in the area is that we do need more affordable housing for seniors because they're on a fixed income. And I think this is a great project moving forward. You know, one of the things I want to think this is a zoning, we can still work a little bit on the aesthetics of the building, but I think that's something that we need in our community. We've got a growing senior community. Some of the seniors are living in areas that are not, how would I put this, is built for them, is what I'm going to say. There I've had a couple of stories of some of the seniors that are in areas where, you know, they're they're not happy at the location they're at because of some of the neighbors, things like this. This would put them all in one proximity where they can socialize and have a lot in common. I think this is a great project moving forward. I'm in full support of it.
Other comments, questions?
I have a question for Scott. Do you know if the active 55 and older community that's going in off of 1626 has a similar rent structure? I guess it's not technically subsidized, it's the 9%. Is it is it the same concept as what she's presenting?
I think this is our only 9% program. Believe we have a couple other 4% projects in the city or being proposed. I don't I don't believe there's another structure that's a competitive structure like this. This is this is only 9%.
Thank you.
Councilor Floreskill.
Hi, thank you for your presentation. Can you tell me if you have any affiliation with any of the other housing developments like that in around either San Marcos or Buta?
Do you mean like other affordable developers?
Developments, like do you have an association with any of their ones either in?
No. So I mean, we we all a lot of us all know each other, though, right? And I believe that all of us would probably agree that we are advocates for what we do. So if you don't support mine, I do hope that you support the next one, right? Because I do believe in what we're trying to do. But in terms of affiliation, like we are a member of the housing agency that's based here in Texas, but in terms of affiliated with another developer, no.
Okay, and thank you for that. I spoke with a couple of people who lived in the 55 and older community in Buta, and they were telling them about this, you know, possibility and look at the agenda and watch the meeting. And one of their complaints with where they're currently living is their rent keeps going up, and they went from employed to just living on social security. So is that will that be the case? Would that be an issue with these apartments?
So HUD HUD does set the rents every year. So if they go up within a specific bandwidth, their rents can increase. HUD also sets or the local community also sets what the utility allowance is, which is their they get their rent is reduced by that much. So yes, they probably will go up because expenses go up as well, right? So it's hard to stay flat with income when everything else is increasing. So rents typically will move with the economy in that area.
If it say for say, for example, if it goes off income and their income goes down, would does that mean their their rent could possibly go down?
Yes, so they re have to recertify every year, and this is a question that you had asked me last time. And yes, so I did find out, like, so they tenants have to recertify every year. So if there is a change in their status or their income has decreased, they've lost a job, or a spouse maybe has passed away, or divorced, or whatever, then they would recertify for a lower income unit. But on the contrary, if they get a new job that pays more, they could also be bumped out of the the income ban that they're in and have to go to the next one. And it's not it's not, I don't know, I can't even think the right word. It's not that exact, though, right? There is a buffer, because the whole point of affordable housing is to help people get a hand up, right? Not a handout, but we're trying to help them not have the burden of living in a warm roof while they're trying to improve their lives, right? Some people are on fixed incomes. The senior communities and active 55 plus are sometimes in a little bit different situation than family deals are, or general population, if you want to call them. Or maybe there's more fluctuation in their job situations, right? But they can go either way. So I don't know if that did I answer your question?
No, that that's helpful, because this person had a job, and then she retired, and so she has social security. And so my concern was just to make sure that it wasn't going to go up if her income goes down.
Correct. Yes, she would recertify, and then she could qualify for less. And like for everybody's reference, like the base social security income is right hovering right around $18,000 to $20,000 a year in income, which puts you at that 30,000 that 30% income quartile. So.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I just wanted to point, this was a rendering or architected. So and it's doesn't have to look like that. That was just sort of, you know, one of the ideas he came up with, and this is sort of the side view. So we wanted to give it some color, some dimension from the feedback that we got earlier when we spoke. So again, just a rendering. But yeah, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Other questions, comments? I've thought about it a lot, gone back and forth on whether I would support this. Ultimately, I don't think I can, just because, number one, there's no multifamily in that area. This council, this body, has consistently voted against multifamily down Button and Wendy Hill, so I'm going to be consistent with the position of the council. And then, number two, the affordable housing, while it's a great program, it's to be it's to be administered in limited supply, especially along, you know, where it's not close to areas that it makes more sense. I just have high aspirations for Button Drive out there along that new road. I do have a question, Scott, does this produce tax? Do they pay school taxes, city taxes?
Would this be a?
Yes, we're not seeking any sort of property tax exemption.
That's because the incentive comes through the HUD, through HUD.
No, no.
Sure, yeah.
So the way the tax credit program works is that we request funding from ultimately HUD that's disseminated by the state agency, which is the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs. So the tax credits are awarded to reduce our overall our overall mortgage.
Right. It's a great incentive, yeah.
Right, so in exchange for that, that's why we can do offer reduced rents, right? But we are not asking the 9% program is equity heavy versus debt heavy, right? Versus a 4% deal, which is way more debt burden than than having the equity. So most 9% deals have the luxury where they can afford that pretty hefty tax payment, right? Property tax payment. So we are expecting to and plan to pay full taxes. So.
Okay, well, that's good. I'm glad to hear that. I just I don't think multifamily zoning goes there. I think there are places in the city where affordable housing would go, but that's that's just my thoughts. That's been the kind of consistent position of the council. But I understand the desire to have an affordable housing project or to continue to do a lot more affordable housing in the city. I don't have that desire, but I do think from time to time, the right project can come along, and it can make sense. But there's no multifamily zoning, and at the end of the day, we don't know what would happen once they get the zoning, if it gets sold or not, you know, those are always questions, you know, that that we have and long-term impact. I don't know what the single-family residents all around there would think, if they would be supportive or not. Typically, single-family subdivisions aren't supportive, especially of multifamily, even private multifamily, much less affordable housing, you know? So those are just those are just my thoughts, but I'm not expecting to win, I'm not trying to sway, I'm just I've always voted against multifamily on Button and Wendy Hill. I don't think I've ever voted for multifamily out there. So additional thoughts and comments?
I think one of the reasons that we, well, I'll let somebody else go, because I've already gone.
Councilor Bradshaw.
I was just going to say, you know, while I agree, like, the location, there probably is a better spot for this. I think it's a great opportunity because it is small, and I believe that you are quoted with saying that 55 and older communities produce the least amount of.
Vehicle track.
Yes, yes.
Which is not, I mean, maybe it would become a 55 and older community. They're asking for support, then they want multifamily zoning, and then maybe they'll get section 9 55 and over housing. I mean, we'll see, but it's the zoning issue that's the question. I'm sorry.
That's your holdup? Okay, okay. Well, yes, so I was just I was just speaking to the size of the community that they're proposing. I think that, you know, something small enough could be a good fit there, and I think that it's a really good opportunity for the elderly who are in our community and who are looking for something a little bit more affordable, because we all know that rent regular rental rates are significantly increasing and continue to go up. And so I like the idea, I like the concept.
Additional thoughts?
Yes, this is Councilman Topias, Mayor. I know this area where you're talking about, and it is a light industrial in that area. And it does back up to, I believe, to a house in that site. But I was going to ask her, is that the only concept building that they are proposing as far as the aesthetics and the way it looks? Because I don't see any.
It's okay.
Faces, forest trees.
So that was just an initial rendering that we had up there. I mean, that's not set in stone. We haven't created design plans yet. I mean, it was just an idea that I wanted to share, so.
Sure.
And is that are we contemplating a developer agreement to have any kind of architectural standards or just let them build whatever?
No, I definitely was something I brought forward is that I wanted something that's going to be architecturally pleasing for the area. That's one of the things in our conversation we talked about, and she just came back with a couple of renderings. There was a couple of pictures earlier in our presentation that showed a little more of what I was looking at. I guess it the bottom one shows a little bit, there's one of the neighborhood at night that looked really good.
Yes.
Yeah, almost like those two right there, but there's another one, I just I don't know where it's at. But yeah, that's one of the things that I really, in our conversations, I really stressed was what it looked like. So something that was going to really, you know, highlight the area and be aesthetically pleasing. But one of the things Ms. Bradshaw touched on, and something I was going to talk about was, you know, the amount of traffic. A lot of the, you know, multifamily that we think about in that area, it's we kind of shun away from because of the high traffic volumes. 55 plus, you're not going to have those high traffic volumes, and as you get older, you're probably not going to have any traffic. So most people, you know, don't even leave their homes. Everything they have is there in that community, they get things delivered to them, so that's one of the reasons I think we stay away from multifamily there is because the increased traffic. I think this is not one of those projects that would increase the traffic there.
If we did not get an award, we wouldn't continue to pursue, like even if you approved it, like we would either, I don't even know what the process is, but there'd be no reason for the zoning to move forward or to get voted on.
So you so the two things in advance would be the developer agreement and the award prior to bringing zoning forward?
No, so the award doesn't officially happen until July, so we would have to have zoning in place, but we would know whether we were getting an award by that point, if that makes sense.
I'm trying to determine which which comes first, the zoning or the award?
Zoning would have to come first.
Right, so if you got the zoning, it didn't get the award, then it's just multifamily.
Correct.
Zoning wise.
Well, is there a way to undo zoning?
Well, you did you say that you knew about the award prior to culminating the zoning process, or?
So they will publish scoring typically within a week of when applications are made, right? So we maybe 10 days, it's not it's not been super consistent, so that you get an early look. So there were, in this region, there will be three awards for sure, right? In region seven, which is the Austin MSA, right? Besides the application that I have here in Kyle, everything else was in the city of Austin. There were three applications that were in front of ahead of me. Two of them received resolution of support from the city of Austin, one of them did not, and it was it was withdrawn. So if this is approved by city council, and I and you grant me your resolution of support for this deal, then there is a high probability, not a guarantee, because, you know, I never know if there's somebody else behind me that maybe is pulling a rabbit out of a hat and will score more points, right? But we are aligned fairly well if we're if we get the support that this would get an award. So.
Can you step forward two steps to the mic?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Okay. Scott, is there a way to draft something that if we approve the zoning, it's just for this project? Scott, is there a way to draft something that if we approve the zoning, it's just for this project? Or once it's done, it's done?
No, and they could sell it the moment. They get the award as well. I'm sorry, I don't know you, but that, I mean, that is, those are, I mean, we just deal with developers consistently on these types of things and the affordable housing is very competitive. We have, there are lots of groups that, I mean, you can put it on any parcel at any time, so. It's the multifamily that's, that's the challenge of titling the land for multifamily prior to having, and without any actual development agreement in place to control the architectural standards, you know, or even a working knowledge that what's being proposed is actually going to come out there. I mean, biggest regrets I've had is voting on, in particular on the East Side. East Side, it happens consistently where zoning or agreements get put in place and then they get, they get turned through. And I'm not saying that you would. I would just prefer to make sure that we, we're actually getting into the agreement with, we're kind of going to a partnership, that that partnership is solid. So if we could get a solid DA in place and we could ensure that the project was ready to go prior to zoning, so that the zoning was the last piece, I would support it, just on the, on the testimony of the council, so.
So is there a way, so part of the application process is that I have to at least have the zoning applications submitted? And I don't have to have zoning until what's called time of commitment, which is when they actually commit the funds to the developer, which should be end of July, early August. So is there a way in the process to at least just submit the application for zoning, but it just sort of sits?
Sure. Yeah, we can do all of those things, but ultimately the council needs to understand, like you can make a different call on that. If you think that multifamily is fine and the DA is not necessarily important, we can just give the commitment because then it's just speculative on your end and the entitlement for multifamily makes the property more valuable, if that's the goal, to make the property more valuable. So you can go through that, that process just real straightforward and hope, hope for the best.
Right, it would just, you know, so that being said, it would also be the hope that if you do support the development and we have that sort of agreement in place, that the zoning wouldn't go until we knew that we were going to get an award, that the city would also keep up their side of the bargain, right?
Right, no, it's tricky.
Because we've invested a lot of money.
Who do you want, yeah, who do you want to take the risk, the city or the developer?
Right, but.
I always prefer the developer.
Again, like I'm not saying that you wouldn't, but that's the risk on our side.
Sure, I understand.
So.
That is the name of the game. There's.
Right, so, you know, do you trust me? Do I trust you? And are we, can we put measures in place that would benefit both of us, so?
What do y'all want to do?
I like the idea of proceeding with the DA, just so we were covered.
Sitting on the zoning and then being able to make sure they get awarded and that we move forward in the right direction.
Yeah, because I'm with, I'm with Mayor Mitchell. I don't know if multifamily is good in this area, but I like it only because it's 55 and older and it looks like they're close to a neighborhood. So as a person who has a mom in a 55 and older community, I don't want to see her in these apartments with younger kids in that area. So I see this is right close to a park and this is close to a family, so that makes me feel a little bit better about putting that here because it also won't be a burden to the neighborhood. With that said, I don't want to see many more multifamilies in this area. So this is specific to what it is that you're trying to bring in. Ms. Me and Councilmember Rizzo and had an interaction last week with the 55 and older community and I was like, man, I wish we had this so we could bring them over. I mean, we have at least 23 people ready to rent from us right now, so. But with that said, yes, I think a DA would be a great piece, kind of as a protection to the city and something showing that, yes, we were willing to do that for you guys.
Thank you.
So would you like the DA to run concurrent with our letter of support? Like, would you like to start with the DA and then go to letter of support? Or would you like to go ahead and give the support and then just see what the agreement holds?
Concurrent. I'd like to see them together.
Is that harder for you guys? Like, how does that look?
So our tax credit applications are due on Monday. So that's part of the.
And that's the problem.
That's sort of the problem.
The short, short notice is when I've got this last week was one of the things that I, I just wanted a little more time. It just felt like it was rushed. That's kind of one of the only drawbacks I have from the project. I like the project. I know we need more affordable housing, more 55 plus because I get those phone calls. I talk to those people. And, you know, I think it's a great project. I just, I just don't want to see any other multifamily go up in that area.
I'm trying to remember how long we worked within NRP before they got their entitlements from us. We just took them through the wringers. It was a year of working with them to put every single thing in place before they got.
Year and a half.
A year and a half before they got their entitlements specifically to avoid any of the potential side effects that are, nobody wants. The actual use is not the end of the world. I'm like, I don't think multifamily, but it's not, Councilwoman Tobias was right and Councilwoman Bradshaw, you're all right. I mean, it's not the worst. It is next to industrial, a single-family next to, won't like it, but that's every zoning case we've ever dealt with. So, you know, but at the end of the day, we're not going to have any controls over what the project will bring forward going through the federal process unless we do kind of the traditional setup, some architectural standards. And if you're willing to follow that process with us, I think you would find that there's probably favorable votes here.
Right, well, I mean, we would always want to work with the city that we're in. So your recourse, right, is that when it does go to zoning is that you don't grant me the zoning, right? I guess what we're asking is that if you're going to support the development and we come to agreement from a developer's agreement, right, which I think that we can come to, right? I believe that all of, everybody in this room is.
So I know, I understand because it's a very common question. I apologize for interrupting, but when you put a developer agreement in place, it contemplates the use, but it entitles you to the use whether you have the zoning or not. Zoning then comes in to bring your development, your land into conformity with the DA. But the DA is a legal contract with the city, in which case if we didn't grant you the zoning, for example, you would still be legally entitled to move forward. And I know this through way too much experience, that, so up until this point, we have had times where we grant DAs on 5-2 votes and zonings go on 5-2 votes, but once you get the DA, if the zoning comes forward afterwards and is flipped, you are contractually agreed to get that zoning, in which case, so there's some, there's some, there's some controls for you there. The DA is kind of the governing document. It guides everything. But that's where the architectural standards, we'll talk about, basically everything within the zoning category kind of gets put up and we discuss parking ratios and various other things and kind of form it into a contract. And then this would also include the tax credits and various other measures. And then form that up and then the zoning kind of just comes through naturally afterwards.
I had a very different perception of what the developer's agreement was, right? I thought it was more just sort of a legal, well, I guess legally binding, but a contractual agreement between us in terms of the development standards, not so much that it also granted the use.
It does grant the use.
So I didn't realize that component of it.
Yes.
So.
Correct, Scott? So there's a, if you get into a developer's agreement and it gets passed by council, that is, that's a serious document, that there's something that carries with it. But we've always been hesitant to approve zoning until we have DAs in place. In fact, we're doing that, there's an item just before yours that's been postponed for weeks and weeks and weeks because we don't have the developer agreement in place, just precisely to make sure that the multifamily looks a certain way and that the agreement comes together in a way that fits into our plans as a city.
Okay.
Mayor, this is James Arp.
Yes, sir.
Just for clarification, is this parcel already in the city or is it in the ETJ?
It's in the city.
Okay, so if it's in the city, I don't think that the process that's being described is, is the same. That the process that's being described from the DA is appropriate for ETJ properties. But for property that's already in the city limits, we can't, we can't agree to use via, via contract. That's, I believe contract zoning, but I'll pass off the page and let her weigh in.
But that's, that's correct. We could address other development standards, but we wouldn't be able to address use.
Paige, do you have any ideas on how we can go about this and from a legal standpoint? Do we have like a, another example of this that this has previously been done? Just, you know, kind of going through our minds?
Well, it just depends on the terms and conditions of the, of the agreement you want to strike with the, with the applicant. The deal points that you would want to structure, we could put those in an agreement. And I think what you would, what you would work out is the timing of entering that agreement in relation to the zoning. So you could enter the agreement prior to the zoning being approved and make the agreement not be effective if, and have the agreement be able to be terminated if the zoning is not approved.
Perfect, yeah. I was, I was wondering if we could like date it effective this date? And you're saying that we can, not this date, but like a certain date? And you're telling me, can we make it effective to a future date?
I would make it binding when you enter it and either you are approving the development agreement and making it effective on the same night that you're approving the zoning. You could do it that way, or if you entered the agreement first and your zoning process is lagging, then you could enter the agreement, make it binding right away, but then it terminates if the zoning's not approved and maybe both parties have the ability to terminate that agreement. So that's just an example.
Any thoughts?
Well, we've done a lot of these agreements in various forms and I think that's correct. So maybe, maybe at the end of the day, you could get the DA, which would spell out the, all the different pieces and then, you know, following meeting or, you know, that, to be sure of what you're getting, they should be on the same agenda, which is quite often what we do, I suppose. So maybe that's where I'm, that's where I'm confused on in-city DAs. That's, but that, again, that's kind of up to the timeframe, but what you're asking for is the letter of support now, which I'm, what I'm hearing is if you can't get the letter of support right now, it may kill the whole deal to start with. So that's, that's going to be up to this board ultimately, whether we want to start this process now, go ahead and give the support to help her get the, the things in place that she needs or the developers and, or whether we want to make them come through the more traditional process similar to what we did with NRP.
How, how do we get binded on the letter of support? What's the binding on it, Scott?
I, I believe the council can pull out still even after you're awarded, correct?
Yeah, I'm sorry, can you say that again?
The letter of support basically just says we support your application to, to the state. Anything beyond that, we would still have to bring forward?
Yes, and with the zoning application, I also have to submit a hold harmless letter so that if zoning is not granted, there's no, I, we don't have any recourse or anything like that, so.
So maybe the plan is go and give the support now and then, which kicks it off and then we got work to do to get through the development process?
Correct.
I was still confused by what James brought up. Are we still going to get in a situation where we have to zone this as multifamily before we get everything done with them? So we're going to entitle it multifamily in this process and they can still walk away afterwards? If we can't do an in-city DA?
I think the question is about timing when we, they hear back from the state, so if you.
Well, I think it's actually exactly the opposite. It's, the risk is, what James and Paige are saying is we can't give them assurances. If we give them a DA without the zoning, that they will get the zoning. And if they don't get the zoning, if it was out of city, then we would be in breach of contract as a part of an annexation. Like Casetta Ranch, we're annexing them in, like if we just didn't do the annexation, they still have an agreement in place. So there's rights and entitlements. But with this DA, what you're saying is the use still has to follow the zoning because they're already in city. So there's a DA and a zoning that combined make the formal agreement. So if you only get the DA, you only get half the agreement essentially because they're in, in city.
That's correct.
But both of those cases would be something that we would want to put in place and are really kind of irrespective of the letter of support, except that the letter of support kind of signifies that we intend to support an agreement that we haven't seen yet.
But it is not an obligation to grant the.
It's not. It kicks it off down the road. It's, yeah, exactly.
Right, I mean, I would like the zoning and would hope that if you're supporting the development that we would be able to come to an agreement and get to that point that works for all of us, right? But, you know, you are not obligated to grant the zoning.
We have to start this process now according to the developer's timeline if we want to be sympathetic to the developer.
And before, before we even approve the zoning, you'll already know that you are awarded, correct?
We'll have a good idea where we sit with the scoring.
Okay.
You know, I mean, you know, the best that we can tell, but it, guaranteed or no for sure probably would not be until probably May timeframe.
And could we get the zoning after that, after they get their guarantee? Or do you need that before that?
No, so I don't, the zoning doesn't actually have to be in place until end of July, early August timeframe, so.
So there's a window there?
Yeah, we'll get time.
Yeah. So the zoning has to be in place before they formally give you the award and we sign our letters of commitment of funding, which is after the formal award, so.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to, for the city to make a letter of support for this project?
Second.
Let's move back. Councilwoman Rizzo, second to my Councilwoman Flores Kell. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Councilwoman Bradshaw, yes, I say. Councilwoman Allison.
Thank you. So I certainly appreciate the discussion and the thought process of the yes attitude that we're displaying here. I'm in agreement with the need for 55 and up affordable housing. I'm empathetic to that idea. I'd certainly be supportive of it in another part of our city, not in this proposed area. So I will be voting no on the support letter.
Okay, I have a question, if I may. So you just need this letter of support. If for some reason you find a better or different location, I mean, that, that doesn't matter, right? Right now, you just need to know that the city isn't going to support, or no?
No, so it is specific to this site and this location.
Okay.
If I find, you know, so the other thing is always affordability, right? So to have a hundred-unit development, the land needs to be on the less expensive side versus the more expensive side to make all the numbers work so that we can afford to build it and do what we do and provide great units and everything like that. So there's that component also. If you don't give our support this time, you know, maybe I can find land that is affordable, that I, that works and I come back in a year or two, right? I mean, I still, Kyle's still a great place. I mean, it's, if it's not this year, then maybe you'll entertain it another year, you know? But I understand the concerns about the location. There, if I could have it like as already zoned, like right next to the hospital, right next to a doctor's office, right next to the supermarket, I wouldn't be able to afford it and build affordable housing on it. So, right, I mean, those perfect spots of land are your Class A-plus market rate developers, right? They are not affordable housing. So, and that is unfortunately sort of the nature of the beast, right? So we don't always get the ideal piece of land on where we try to create our little pockets and wonderful communities, so. I understand all the concerns. I do, right? I mean, I get it. So just trying to share sort of on the other side, some of the challenges that we have too, to try to do what we're doing, so.
May I ask you, besides price, what else brought you to that area?
So one of, one was availability in terms of where I found land for sale. One is a, is a seller who's willing to put it under contract for 12 to 16 months, right? Because our timeline with the state agency is so long, like, you know, so can I find land? Sometimes, yes. Can I find someone who's willing to put it under contract and they're not going to close on it for at least a year in this market, right? So that makes it, sometimes I sort of get pigeonholed into a certain spot because that was somebody who was willing to work with me to get to that point, so.
All right, we have a motion. We have a second. Councilmember Bradshaw.
I just, I just want clarification. So we can give, we can provide them with this letter of intent and then decide. So we can give, we can provide them with this letter of intent and then decide a few months down the road that this is not the direction that we want to go, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
But it's definitely going to push us significantly farther towards pressure to vote yes after this first yes vote. Because then they're going to start their process and...
If they bring a DA forward, then we can...
We're going to, you know, going to vote yes.
And the zoning would be done last? That would be the very last step that we would do?
Yeah, it's a rubber stamp because the development agreement essentially would put it into place.
But I thought...
I think that's one of the, forgive me for speaking out or out of turn, but that is part of why I'm voting for no on the letter of intent, to not give any kind of information. We talked about trust earlier with the developer. Certainly, we are in elected positions in public, in a lot of, you know, everything we say, it's, it can be bought back on us. So I just want to take a, give the respect of the posture upfront that it's, while I think the project is admirable, and I think it is needed in our city, it's just not a particular area for my...
All right, any other comments? Roll call vote.
Rizzo?
Aye.
Bradshaw?
Aye.
Ellison?
Nay.
Tobias?
Nay.
Coach?
Nay.
Flores Kell?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Nay. Motion fails four to three. Sorry about that.
That's okay. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for reading this forward. Thank you very much.
All right. Next up, agenda item number 23, considering possible action to direct the Planning and Zoning Commission to revise the CBD 1 and CBD 2 zoning codes. This is coming from some of our downtown committee folks that have been working on this, Councilmember Ellison, Councilmember Tobias. Go ahead.
Thank you, sir. Did you want to lead, Tobes, or?
You can go with it, sir.
Okay. Forgive me, I'm using your nickname, Councilmember Tobias.
Yeah, it's all right.
Tobes. It's 10 o'clock.
It's a good one.
We're at hour number five.
Yeah. I've been up since 3:00. It's okay.
Oh, man. Well, we'll jump right into this here. So I just wanted to give a brief recap. So you all might remember, three weeks ago, I guess now it's been, or however long ago our last meeting was, we brought forward a brief presentation. Councilmember Tobias and I sit on the Downtown Task Force. And I just want to give a brief recap, as well as our, to kind of remind the council, but as well as the public, kind of the idea behind Downtown Revitalization, what we're trying to do there. So I'm going to go through this list of completed or ongoing items that we've done for Downtown, and then the list that we are working on. This is what we presented a few weeks back, but I wanted to give a reminder to everybody. So completed or ongoing items, stakeholder meetings, pedestrian crosswalk signs, our project that we're working on in 104 South Burleson, updates to the city square, railroad siding relocation, wayfinding signage, the Burleson Road improvements, Pi Day events, and on the square improvements. Let's see, business recruitment position added to the Economic Development Department, downtown wireless that we provided, downtown Wi-Fi free, the upgrades to the train depot, the upgrades to the old city hall, we're also part of that. But the things that were still needed, and that we talked about in our last meeting, that the Downtown Task Force would be working on bringing to council to consider moving forward and working on. One, update to zoning and the overlay, which is what our agenda item is mostly about tonight. Additional signage, additional events, dedicated manager for Downtown, reroute or remove highway designation from Center Street, incentives for retail or restaurants, additional pie, Capital Texas branding, art program, Downtown Business Organization and shop local camp, shop local campaign led by the Chamber of Commerce. Co-working and small business assistance space led by Chamber, 108 and 201 South Burleson, and the Senior Center, and possibly what we might be doing with that. So those are the laundry list of items that the task force and staff has come up with. And as I stated, the very first one was an update to the zoning and overlay. The agenda item that we put forward today and this evening was to tackle one of those items in being our central business districts. We have two central business districts in the city. One is more intensive than the other. And there are a number of different permitted uses within each of those districts. We don't make decisions based on the business or things like that. We allow for the zoning, and then there's all the permitted uses that are allowed under that zoning. So we've, once again, I gave the recap last three weeks ago, but anybody who's tuning in for the first time on this, back in 2019, we had a number of different downtown town halls, conversations led by various council members throughout various months, throughout the summer, spring and summer of 2019. We had a huge, around 70, 75 people, town hall on a Saturday morning here, which was great attendance and lots of great feedback. People participated that are residents in our downtown, businesses in our downtown, residents outside of our downtown and around our city, and other prospective business entrepreneurs that came with interest of our downtown as well. And so we also talked about the downtown survey that was done, which gave us a lot of the ideas that we had in our Downtown Revitalization Plan, it's part of our comp plan, but reaffirmed an outsider view of the need for these certain items. And definitely updating the zoning and the permitted uses allowed in that area were a huge part of it. The other commitment we have made through those town halls and with this task force and going forward is the continued communication and dialogue with our community, particularly the community in our downtown. We will, of course, open input to everyone, but consistently and constantly making that effort to be known in our, for our residential community in particular downtown, of what Downtown Revitalization means, what we are trying to achieve with that. And we've gotten a lot of great feedback from that with the town halls, but there's still more to come. And so we certainly are welcome and open to that, and we want to certainly focus our attention in the C-square area to the east of the train depot area. And so these are some of the things that we wanted to bring forward and hopefully get a robust discussion about. Incorporating our Planning and Zoning Commission to assist with this, assist with charrettes and various things to get input from our residents and our community on the updates to those two particular zoning items. As well, the task force has met with a firm to talk about perhaps giving assistance to us with those charrettes and facilitating those charrettes as well. And so that was another item we want to talk about, and I'll, we'll hammer back on that here in just a moment. But I want to release the floor to Councilmember Tobias to add anything he would like.
Yes, exactly what Councilman Ellison said. We have a long laundry list of things that have been completed already, but we still have other things that we want to accomplish as well. Again, to address everybody in the city, ladies and gentlemen and council, the whole focus again is to get our downtown where we want to be a modern, yet traditional and historic area of our city that we can show pride in. And that's what we have had talked about, and that's why when I was brought on board with this task force last year, it got me excited because, again, I can always continue to say that I'm a native here, I grew up here, and it's, I enjoy the many festivals and events and businesses that were downtown that made our city what it was today. So I want to still try to continue that tradition, but at the same time, start making some improvements, starting from the square. And that's always been the number one spot, is starting from the square on out. How can we look at recruiting small businesses in our area? What can we do to maybe start looking at, seriously, start looking at getting some sidewalks with lighting fixtures? Something that we can look at to take pride in, to where we can start getting more pedestrian traffic. Because when you, a lot of us go to these other cities and small towns, and what brings their charm is the traffic, the pedestrian traffic. You can be able to park your car somewhere, and then you can be able to walk to the stores, walk to restaurants, do some shopping, and then also see some, a little bit of history of our downtown. And that's the main goal, is to be able to show the city and show new residents that are moving in a sense of pride of what we have. Because again, we're still having new families that are moving to our area. And it's, it's very welcoming during the holiday season, again, I keep bringing this up, where we have these holiday events with the lights and everything. Everybody is enjoying themselves. They're seeing the photo, they're seeing the lights, they're seeing everything that's going on with the holidays. But you go across the street and everything is closed. There's nothing open that for people to go and have a quick meal, or some coffee, or something like that, or some shopping. So that's the whole idea, is to find a way to where we can start recruiting to get more businesses in. We could probably start reaching out to our community as far as an art program. I'm sure there's artists that are out there in our city that would probably love to contribute to this plan as well. We would love to have that. We would also like to try to also get an alliance with other businesses or any other civic groups that could be able to help us on that. So Councilman Ellison really hits it on all the strong points, but that's kind of what I want to add, is again, we want to be able to focus on our downtown and build out a little bit, but again, bring some of that charm back downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Councilmember Ellison, Councilwoman Tobias, Councilwoman Kell, Flores Kell?
Kell's fine. Okay, so I just have two questions. Is there a defined downtown area that we were discussing right now?
Boy, that's the question of the day. We've only discussed that for two, three years without ceasing.
Okay.
The downtown assessment, like, there are, there is a defined, in our comprehensive plan, area for downtown, but that's in dispute. We've never been able, and that's where Councilwoman Tobias's conversations, everything we've done about focusing more on the square, it's like, that's the area that we all agree on, if that's, if I can answer it succinctly.
Okay, but in with Mr. Tobias and Mr. Ellison, what areas are you guys looking to update? And is it all up Center Street? Is it just the square? Is it, what are you guys looking to start, not just start, but like really to focus on updating?
Can I share a screen, just so that we have a talking point?
Sure.
Don't, don't by any means think that this is in any way official. This was a boundary that the planning department put together as a talking point for folks who wanted to decide what is downtown and what is not. So we can start with this.
There you go.
Perfect. Okay, so my second question is, how close are, do you guys plan on following the December 2019 Downtown Assessment Report?
You're talking about the report that we received from the Texas Downtown Association?
Yeah, the one that was done in October, where, yeah, everybody conjugated and walked, and then, it was done by the Texas Downtown Association, yes, correct.
So, yeah, that's a large part of our guiding document that has led to a lot of what we're doing. That, much of what was in that report is talked about in our Downtown Revitalization Plan, is part of our comp plan, which also outlines the central business districts that currently exist, CBD 1 and CBD 2. Those are outlined in that as well. But I would say, you know, the assessment that we received from the Texas Downtown Association is by and large our guiding document. Of course, everything we do will run through the entirety of the body here, but I would say that's more or less our guiding document that we're looking to do. And what has been proven through that nonprofit association, their work all throughout Texas, which has, they have a track record of showing that those steps have, and been a part of successful downtown revitalization.
Councilor Rizzo?
All right, so the assessment said work centralized on your square. I think our zoning is already perfect for the square. I think we're good. We don't want to jump out too far ahead, or we'll end up in the same situation that we're in right now with empty buildings up and down Center Street. We don't have the connectivity, we don't have the parking, but that's coming. Until we have that coming, I don't think we need to be having this conversation on CBD 1, CBD 2 rewrites, until we have our centralized location started, we start working our way out, and that's gradually going to happen. But if we start jumping before we have sidewalks, before we have infrastructure in place, before we have roadways, we still have clay pipe in that area, I think that we're biting off more than we can chew. I think what we should be doing is working on the square. As we get bigger, we'll start looking at more zoning changes. And the other thing is, you got to remember what the citizens in that area that live there are wanting. They don't want a zoning change there. So it's one of the things we got to think about as well. As the time gradually grows up, I think we will get some changes, but that's something that's going to be a natural process that just grows out.
Yes, sir. So if I may respond, certainly all of those things are needed as well, and we've outlined that those improvements are needed. So I don't know if I would, and maybe this is terminology difference here, I don't know if I'd call it a zoning change. We're talking about the permitted uses that are allowed within those zoning that are already established. So getting input, and once again, I appreciate, you always bring it up, Councilmember Rizzo, and I'm always going to tell you, repeat back to you, that is the point of doing these plans, is to get input from the citizens, get input from the community. Same thing with the comprehensive plan. Those plans are what gives us direction from our residents, from our community, to tell us and give us their input to us, for us to then support and follow those plans. So that's the idea behind what we're talking about tonight, not a rezoning of anything. And certainly, if anyone else on the task force, Howard or Scott, want to speak up on that, that is not what we're talking about here, rezoning. It's simply reviewing the permitted uses that are already allowed in those already created zoning categories.
If you're rezoning the uses, and that changes heights, aesthetics, is that correct, Howard?
If, I think what Councilman Ellison is talking about is what the restrictions are in the certain districts that we have downtown, and if we seek to be more inclusive and more attractive to more activity operators who will come to our downtown, which then would create an attraction that would bring citizens, not just from Kyle, but outside. I don't think we necessarily need to reassign zoning districts, or necessarily assign different metrics to the building standards. I think right now what we want to concentrate on is making our downtown as accessible and attractive to as many operators as possible, because it's going to start from the private sector. It's going to come from business and industry that's going to come downtown. It's going to be restaurants, it's going to be specialty shops, it's going to be that which will bring people downtown. And maybe our CBD 1 and CBD 2 is predicated on a code that was written, you know, maybe back in the turn of the century, and we need to, we need to modernize that. But as Councilman Tobias said, you know, with an air towards tradition. I don't know that we're talking about a wholesale revision to our zoning map. If you'll notice that the map that I've, that I've shared, the talking point, this is not a zoning map. This is actually a current land use map. The map that's up there in front of you doesn't necessarily reflect the boundaries of CBD 1, CBD 2, or RS, or any other districts that we have downtown. What it does is looks at what's actually operating today. This is the ethos that you get, this is the sense of place that you get in Kyle's downtown. You can see as you move further east on Center Street, you start to see more red parcels because those are listed as, you know, commercial, as non-residential. because those are listed as, you know, commercial, as non-residential. There's a lot of yellow in there as well. So we have to be mindful of our downtown is a neighborhood and that's absolutely, um, unique that I, that I found. There's a lot of, there's a lot of small towns in Texas. I, I certainly don't know all of them, but I've been trying to find an analogous city somewhere that has a downtown that's as residential as ours is. Most towns, especially the ones in the Hill Country, you know, have a, have a square and, and a, a commercial square at that, and then residential once you get blocks away. Uh, but we have residential uses right on our main thoroughfares. So we, we have to be mindful of both sides of this and, and, and right now we probably want to look at the, the package of land rights and especially as they relate to land use, um, on these, on these properties and, and make them higher performing.
Okay. But I'm going to disagree with one thing is that this is not what's going to start the, uh, development downtown. What's going to start the development downtown is what this council is doing, and that's investing in our downtown. Us investing in our historic downtown square park is what's going to start the development there. Us showing the way of the development that we want down there is what's going to start it. The conversation is going to bring a revitalization to our downtown square. I, uh, this council's been doing a great job and, um, you know, I just want us to be careful that we don't try to develop faster than what we can grow.
Councilor Floris Kell.
So I talked to a resident today and contrary to what, uh, Councilmember Rizzo said, I know some people that would like to rezone it, but definitely not to CBD one or CBD two. And as I look at this, I can't help but think maybe, you know, Meyer Street and Center Street, that's mostly residential. So I don't know how I would feel making that. We created this residential, I'm not residential, the CBD one, CBD two. That was created by the city as far as it used to be all residential. And so we're changing that.
Right. There are residences that are currently being used residential that were zoned by the city commercial in a big zoning that took place back to the day.
Correct. But if you, if you drive down that road, you could easily get one of those houses that are technically, uh, zoned and used as business and turn it back into a house. I mean, it's not like they're, they're that changed or that updated. So I'm hesitant only because I feel like it's, they're not already to be CBD one and CBD two. I think we, we need a real defined location. Um, that's, that's not just me, that's me talking to residents. Um, I've walked that neighborhood, I've walked by the park and, and all around that area. And I see that it is, a lot of that is business, but I, I really don't think from my interaction with these people that they want that to be CBD one and CBD two.
That, that it already is. So you're stating that people want that rezoned to a, oh, well, that's the district. So what do you, I guess, what have you, cause I, I certainly would appreciate, I know Councilmember Tobias as well, respected his community and certainly, uh, folks can reach out to him if they don't feel comfortable talking to me. Um, what is been the feedback that you've gotten on what, as you said, has been told to you of rezoning to? So once again, this is not a rezoning request.
Correct.
That's not what we're attempting to do.
Right. That's, we really need to clarify what we're, what's being discussed here.
Correct.
So I think, I think that really what Councilmember Tobias and what, um, Councilwoman Ellison are requesting is to look at the land, the uses within CBD one and CBD two, which had been some of the issues when zoning requests were made by applicants, vacant lots, somebody comes forward and they want to say, hey, I want to, it's not about we're telling them what to be zoned, they're requesting for their property to be zoned. The reason that maybe CBD two or one wasn't awarded, even if it was recommended, was because there were some uses in there that weren't, uh, good. And so what we're trying to do is what, what I hear from the two of you is that you're, you're trying to get P and Z to, to dive into all the different types of uses, which is going to be a big long list and see if there are some surgical changes that you might can make to help make the zonings more attractive and maybe better for the downtown residents such that when commercial zonings are requested naturally, organically, that they could, you maybe get more council support or be more updated or something like that. But it's not a commitment to a zoning category or a yes or a no to CBD one, CBD two. It's not a comp plan. It's actually in the text, in the ordinance for uses. And I think that's what we actually discussed back when the, the, uh, CBD two vote on, you know, over there on Center Street across from Vaqueros failed. It was because of a few of the different usages, usage, uses, uh, within CBD two, sorry, uses is, is, uh, that were causing consternation and prevented, uh, it prevented, it felt like it was preventing development when maybe really it was just, there was some just more discussion about uses within the, the zoning categories. Cause I mean, it was right there on Center Street, already, already red. And it was just a discussion of uses. It was already zoned CBD one, it was vacant, ready to go, commercial all around it. They didn't get approved based on, you know, questions about uses within CBD two. Mayor Protem.
I think that was also recommended in the comp plan too. And it didn't happen, but, uh, my, I have no problem with P and Z looking at the uses and going through that. I think that's great for them to do. Um, I think we're just going to create more restrictive uses. So I'm not sure that it's going to entice people to come and develop those areas, uh, cause in order to come to the compromise, uh, and we've done this so many times, we basically got whittled down to the square. And that was the only thing we could find consensus on. Uh, but I have no problem with P and Z looking at, I think that's what they should do. Um, and, uh, I, I commend, uh, the council members for bringing this forward. Um, but I am curious because we haven't had these downtown conversations like this in a while, like what are the parameters of downtown? And, and thank you, Howard, for, um, putting this map up. It's been a long time since I've seen this and what's considered downtown. And I, I have an idea of where, uh, Councilmember Rizzo's at on this, but I am curious, uh, to hear your opinion, uh, Councilmember Tobias. Does this define the downtown area to you or is this still too wide of a space? Because based on that zoning case that we had, I don't know, two years ago, year and a half ago, I mean, this was clearly out of bounds for the, what the people believed that lived downtown.
So I, I'm looking at this as somebody that wants to open up, I come downtown and I look and I say, okay, here's a spot, here's a spot, oh, here's residential, residential, nope, nope, nope. Okay. It's like all over the place is the way I see it. So, um, well, I see that it's too far all the way down. Uh, possibly so. Uh, but again, what I'm trying to get at is to start from the beginning and get all the revisions in places to far, as far as what is considered something of a use and what it could be used for, whether it's for a, a restaurant, or if it could be used for a bakery or a retail and start small. Cause that's how I'm looking at it, new coming into this. Uh, it is a larger scale. I know it goes all the way down to Center Street, all the way to, of course, uh, where all the way by Wallace. But it is, it is a pretty large area for the downtown. Uh, I was thinking more up to like right up to, possibly up to Sledge or where the church was on that end. But again, um, this is, this is a new map that I have seen that, that shows everything. But I, like I said, my main focus would be to start in the square and work, and work in that generalized area. That makes sense to you guys?
And I certainly want to say, I think that if I might add, you know, this map, I, I've, I've seen it before too. It's, it's been brought up many times before, certainly a number of times in 2019 when we were discussing this. Uh, this is not, and, and as, as Mr. Kertz correctly described, that is not set in stone. That is not, um, what we consider downtown, but I, I want to remind, uh, those that downtown would be the, the district. It does not mean that it, downtown will be all businesses and should be all businesses. There are plenty of thriving downtowns across this state that look exactly essentially how you would see along Center Street, red, 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 which is all the businesses. And then just behind there and two blocks back is residential. It is actually a benefit, uh, for those businesses is talked about in the downtown, uh, assessment report. It's talked about in our downtown revitalization plan. That's typically a struggle for a lot of, uh, downtown areas is there's not a connectivity to residential area. So we actually have that benefit. The, the reverse side of it is of course, then, you know, you have folks that have lived there for many years and for them, it's a residential community to them. And so that, that's just the challenge, but it, um, we do have a downtown, that downtown is important. Uh, uh, it was made clear, whether you agreed or disagreed with a certain rezoning of a, a plot of land, it was clear through all the processes, through all the participations in the town halls and attendances and, and the feedback that the city of Kyle, residents both in, in their downtown area, in this region, all across our city, want a, a, a thriving downtown that is something that they can, uh, participate and share time with their families with and, you know, and shop local and, um, restaurants and all those different types of things. Like you said, if, if you go back and listen to the town hall that we had and you look, listen to the clear objections, yeah, there were some objections there that I think council is pretty much in agreement with. And that's something that we can filter out through, uh, reviewing these, these uses. And I certainly want to, um, allow Howard and Scott to jump in here, uh, on any additional points that we might've missed, but I, I, I don't, you know, I think that's kind of the concern and I, I, I would like to help, uh, our colleagues and trying to help educate our residents in that area that, that downtown, even though whatever the line that is drawn, it does not mean that you are, uh, your, your home will immediately become a business or something like that, or someone's kicking you out. Certainly your, your value, your property will go up if you're, you're then considered, uh, residential as opposed to, uh, or commercial as opposed to residential, but, um, so I just want to remind everybody that there, there's plenty of communities that look exactly like that and have residential and they stay residential just, uh, behind the row of commercial that's aligned there. So I, I'll, uh, allow Howard and Scott to add any input if they'd like.
Well, I just want to be clear that the request based on the agenda item is to revise the zoning codes, not districts, meaning we're not drawing, based on the way I'm reading it, we're not having P and Z tell us where, what downtown is. We're just saying these are two zoning categories. If you're going to request a zoning category downtown, it's going to be one of these two, unless you want just retail, which nobody's going to support that because those are, that's more intense than CBD one and two is like very specifically tailored to downtowns. So if there are uses that maybe we're saying aren't appropriate, that's what I'm seeing this heading say, like go take a look at the uses and say, like, we're going to make surgical changes to the code itself or proposals to the code. Is that, is that really what y'all are saying for this first step with P and Z to have them look at these uses? Are you talking about borders and, you know, more of a visioning, you know, where the P and Z would come back and tell us how to do revitalization?
Well, P and Z's recommending, so they would make a recommendation to us, but, uh, no, I think that, um, did my, my, my goal with this is to keep this, the scope very narrow and to task P and Z with, uh, exactly how we've, we've put it on the agenda item to revise the CBD one and CBD two, CBD two, um, the codes and the uses within them. So that, that's what I would, uh, my hope is for the planning and zoning to, to, um, take on. Now, Councilmember Tobias, Howard, Scott, if you want to add anything to that that I've missed or anything, please feel free.
The same thing, same concept.
Uh, I can jump in. I can jump in a little bit. Uh, that is the intent and the chart of uses is right now it's very broad. So if I could just give an example, you know, under the RS zone, you could have a bank right in the middle of, of Center Street. And we're not saying that that's right or wrong. We're asking the P and Z to say, should that use be allowable in the RS in CBD one and CBD two? So that's really what they're going to do. They're going to go calling through, uh, the uses allowable within the zones, uh, in the CBD districts and recommend more appropriate uses for walkability primarily.
Yeah.
So foot traffic equals sales, right? Or encourage more retail or restaurants or other uses that are going to bring activity and reduce uses that don't bring activity.
It's pretty, that's pretty limited. That's pretty narrow. That's a narrow scope.
Or it could, you know, change the use to where you're a resident and now you've got a business that you don't agree with right across next to you. I mean, it could do that as well, right, Scott?
Well, in this case, uh, I don't think they would be adding, uh, additional uses to like an RS. So for example, if an RS is currently next to a residential, the lowest potential use in that RS district could already go into downtown. So I think what they're going to try to do is, is weed out those negative uses that are adjacent to, to residential.
It's going to become even more restrictive.
It's more restrictive.
Right. That's what we're doing. It's an exercise in being.
You know, my concern right now is the residents there.
Absolutely.
Cause I've known them all my life, um, the majority of all those residents there. And one thing I don't want to see them is get displaced. I don't, you know, when you start talking about commercializing things, you know, that, that raises property taxes, you know, I mean, big time. And some of these people are on fixed incomes and they've been there generations, you know? I'm, I'm, I'm not saying we're not going to grow. We're going to do it. Let's do it naturally. Let's get the connectivity in, let's get the infrastructure in before our eyes get bigger than what we, we, we can grow. You know what I mean? Cause our eyes are always bigger than what we have when it comes to infrastructure. We get the infrastructure in, I think we're better off there. If not, we end up with empty buildings. It's one of the things that I worry about.
It, it's a good comment. So I've done a lot of study and I, you're probably not asking my, my two cents on this, but a lot of cities do what you're just saying. You know, they do infrastructure first and what they have found is that the use should have come before the infrastructure because you put in a lot of infrastructure like we have and we don't see an influx of people. So we want people to create the need for the infrastructure rather than put the infrastructure where there's no people.
Cause we did it here and we've got the infrastructure, but now we're adding to it. We're, we're going to make it a better, amenable his, uh, district in the middle. Unfortunately, we don't have the sidewalks down Center Street. We don't have the parking up and down Center Street. In order to bring all that forward, you know, you've got to have that. We're getting there. We just got to make sure we don't try to rush it.
It's hard to justify without the.
I'm going to tell you right now, I'm 51 years old and one thing I've learned is a little bit of patience. You're not going to do it in overnight, but if you're patient, it'll happen and it's going to happen in a positive way. Soco didn't grow in, in a day. I, I was, I first started working in that area back in 1991 and what it's done from them to now didn't happen overnight, but now it's a thriving community. If you're patient, you invest and you're doing it right, then you're going to be okay. Uh, we just can't rush it.
So if I may, um, and to, to further to Scott's point, and also having that development community help pay for that infrastructure and improve that infrastructure when they come in. Uh, so there, there are ways to, to help do that. And that's not just all on the city investing in that to improve that infrastructure, hoping that that will bring that in. You're having the developers, they were coming in, bringing the business and helping pay for the infrastructure that will improve the area. Uh, the other thing is I certainly understand the concerns about, um, folks' input and folks that have been in that area, but that is exactly what we're proposing here. An opportunity for the community to have input and to be a part of a process where they can share their thoughts on every bit of part of this. It will go to however many, uh, meetings that the planning and zoning decides to have, however many charrettes or whatever goes on. All those will be opportunities and then planning and zoning will make a recommendation to us. And then we'll probably have two, uh, readings on that as well. So there will be a plethora of opportunities for residents to come in and give input on this, once again, in, in my opinion, a, a very narrow scope of what we're asking, uh, planning and zoning to do, but also a very important step in improving, because I would argue, uh, uh, push back a little bit, Councilmember Rizzo, that we're not even doing it the natural way. Uh, so and not even doing it the, uh, you know, I've heard terms of organic chain and all that stuff. We're not even doing it that way, even when it is, uh, done that way. So we, we need to take it, one thing we learned in 2019, we need to take a step back. Uh, and this is that step back to allow for the community to be a part of the process and give us input on this in order to create, come to the table and come, uh, come to an agreement in order to, to eventually move forward here.
I agree.
Councilman Floris Kell.
Okay, I just want to make sure I understand that you were doing, we're looking at codes and not districts, and you're, we're looking to direct planning and zoning to revise codes? I guess my confusion is, when I read this, and I had a concern from a resident today, and they click on this, it's not really well explained what it is they're going to change or like any supporting materials. So that's where I get a little confused, and that's why we're talking about it, and I get it. But if I can click on this and figure out what exactly it is that you guys are going to ask the codes to be changed to, it would make this process a little bit easier. So is there, have we really talked about that? I know, I know I got the word restrictive, so we're going to try to make the codes a little bit restrictive, but I don't know in what sense.
Well, that's what the process is going to be. You're going to send it down to P and Z, and they're going to work it through, and they'll have public meetings, and there'll be discussion, and none of what they recommend is set in stone that comes back to us.
Okay.
And then we decide that. So it'll all come back before you again, but it allows them to work through it.
They amend the community, yeah.
Right. Well, the map, the map matters because the way you define the boundaries kind of influences how you think about the zonings. It's like, so for example, is the, if we're looking at, you know, the lot at the corner of Moore and Meyer Street, you know, or up there at, you know, Meyer and Lockhart, you know, multiple two or three blocks off, like what uses are appropriate there? Is that CBD two appropriate or versus if it's right on Center Street? And if we're just trying to cast one zoning category over all of it, then whereas, you know, so those, it all, it's like a, it's like a surgery, but I'm, I'm fine honestly with, if P and Z wants to have the discussion, and I don't have to for a while, that'd be fine with me, and then we get to get some of that feedback. It's honestly downtown discussions go better when I'm not present. So I think that's a, I think that's a proven point. That has happened in the past, so.
And the idea is for them to help coordinate and facilitate the opportunity for like the charrettes and the input and the community involvement. That is a key component of this. And we hear you, Councilmember Rizzo, that is something you've brought up many times. We are in a log step with that. We understand that. We realized that issue back in 2019, and I think that is the big part of what this process is, to do that. And to Councilmember Floris Kell's point, once again, I, I have to take accountability for that. We didn't get the, we didn't specifically direct staff to put in the backup material the parts from the comprehensive plan that outline the two central business districts and then the zoning categories and the permitted uses underneath them. That should have been in there, and that is regrettable that we didn't have that in there. But that is a part of our comp plan, and those uses are listed out entirely of everything that's allowed in those.
Okay, decision time, or we can keep talking about it? I'm, I'm good with it, so I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved by the mayor, second by Mayor Protem. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed?
No.
Motion carries, six to one. Next up, city manager's report.
Did we miss agenda item 24? All right, not exactly.
I'm getting, I'm getting noticed. What am I missing?
24.
Oh, my gosh. All right. First reading and ordinance of the City of Kyle, Texas, regulating sex offender residency within the City of Kyle, establishing child safety zones, et cetera. Chief, I'm sorry, I completely didn't know this was still here for us.
No, it's okay, Mayor. I know you've had a long, long, busy day.
Happy to postpone, chief, if you want to postpone.
Yeah. No, that's okay. I'll be very brief if you're okay with it.
Well, I'm really not. I'd love to postpone if we can postpone. Do you have, you have something being waited, waited on? It's nearly 11:00. We're all exhausted.
Okay, sir.
Can I say also, because I'm sure there might be residents that want to speak on this, too, so it might be a good idea to postpone? They might be in bed. I don't think they're waiting. I don't know. I'm just saying, I think it's a good idea as well to postpone.
What is it, chief? What you got? I can see thoughts running through your head right now. Talk to us.
No, you're good. It's just I have two staff members on here with me that have been waiting with us to get here. We're good, though. Sorry, there's no, there's nothing pressing us on this matter, so we're good.
I'm sorry, I was not even, it just was not on my mind. I would have tried to get this one postponed earlier as well. We'll take it much more off the top at the next one if that would be a good compromise for Dago. Tell Dago I'm sorry. I don't know who the other one is, but.
It's Sergeant Bone, and yes, sir, that'll be fine. Thank y'all for letting the other one tonight. That one was legally required, so I appreciate that opportunity, so we're good.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you, chief. All right, next up, city manager's report. Is there any objection to item 19, the signed ordinance is being finally passed? It was a 7-0 vote. All right, seeing none is finally passed. Next up, city manager's report.
Nothing new, I guess, that the mobile testing for COVID is still moving. You can see the information on our website. We do have Great Texas River Cleanup, March 6th. This, I can't remember what year we are with this, but we've done this, I think, four now, four years in a row. So we definitely need volunteers. Please join us, cityofkyle.com/cleanup. There was a question about how to sign up for Reverse 911 or Everbridge System. It's through Warren Central, Texas, so this is information on how to sign up, put your address in, and receive alerts to your mobile phone. Any questions?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Motion adjourned.
Nope.
We still have executive session. All right, next up, executive session. I don't know who's, I don't know.
What items do we have? Two?
We, so we have the Plum Creek Land Dedication, the Texas Lehigh Lease, the Parks Bond Interlocal Agreement with Hays County, and 104 South Burleson.
Project Space Shuttle?
We already did that.
Pursuant to Chapter 551 Texas Government Code, the City Council reserves the right to convene into executive session from time to time as deemed necessary during this meeting. The City Council may convene into executive session pursuant to any lawful exception contained in Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, including any or all of the following topics. Plum Creek Land Dedication, Texas Lehigh Lease, Parks Bond Interlocal Agreement with Hays County. I'm sorry, did we say 104 South Burleson or no?
We need that one still.
104 South Burleson, and that is, is that it?
Did you skip four of them?
Did I skip four?
Okay. All right, very good, thanks.
Perfect.
It's been moved by the mayor, second by Councilmember Rizzo. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, four to zero.